Call the July 7th City Council meeting to order. We've got Commissioner Smith's going to give us the prayer, pledge, and fact of the day.
You would assume the attitude of prayer. Much grace in all that the Father, I thank you now for once again allowing this this opportunity to come before your citizens to protect the buildings of this city. We ask now for your blessings, your guidance, that you direct our every thought. We ask for the Father that those that are in our chamber feel your presence of love, peace, and commitment. We ask all these in our Son Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our fact of the day. On July 17th, July 7th, 1930, construction of the Hoover Dam begins. Over the next five years, a total of 21,000 men worked to produce what is the largest dam of its time, as well as one of the largest man-made structures in the world. The dam provides essential flood control for downstream farming communities and a dependable supply of water for nearby areas. Oh, fact of the day.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. All right. Everybody had a chance to look at the minutes?
Yep.
If so, look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson.
Thank you.
Say my Commissioner Velasquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Well, this gives us great honor, I tell you. I know that Commissioner Velasquez has been to a lot of the bowling tournaments that Petey has been involved in, and so I know she has a special interest as well as the rest of the council. But what an honor to be, you know, in the council. We've got Petey Vargos here, who is, gosh, has sure made Apopka proud, not only at the high school level, but the college level and the NCA level. So with that, I know he's got his dad and his grandmother, but I want to read a proclamation, then we'll get pictures with the city council. This proclamation reads, where Petey Vargos is the 2021 USBC intercollegiate singles champion, and whereas he is a two-time All-American, as well as the 2019 Athlete of the Year at Cumberland College at St. Joseph's in Whiting, Indiana, and whereas he is the captain and anchor bowler, whereas Petey is a two-time member of the Team USA and has won five gold medals for Team USA Tournament of Americas, and whereas during his time at Apopka High School, Petey was team captain and won many awards, including four-time FHSAA Team State Champion, two-time FHSAA Individual State Champion, four-time Apopka High School Bowling MVP, two-time Florida Dairy Farmers Bowler of the Year, two-time Bright House Sports Network's Breakfast of Champions Bowler of the Year, two-time Orlando Sports, varsity Sports Bowler of the Year, four-time Florida Junior Bowling Year Bowler of the Year, and Orlando Sentinel's Breakthrough Athlete of the Year. And whereas his future plans will be to join the Pro Bowlers Tour, and whereas Petey would like to thank his family, the city of Apopka, Apopka High School, and all of his coaches, now therefore I Brian Nelson, Mayor of the city of Apopka, Florida, do hereby proclaim today to be Petey Vargos Day, and ask all citizens enjoying me to congratulate Petey in his success and wish him well in his future endeavors. Petey, watch, come up. Say a few words and we'll get some pictures with the council, please.
Ready?
Yes.
On behalf of myself and my family, I just want to personally thank every one of you. As much as I am throwing the bowling ball, I wouldn't be able to accumulate any of this without the constant support and appreciation you've all shown me over the years, and it never goes unnoticed, and thank you.
All right. Come on, come on, Castle. Get a picture. I got one for your dad, I knew he wouldn't leave here without one.
Oh, no. He'll put it in his garage, his statue there.
Commissioner Velasquez, I know you need to say something, so why don't you go ahead and tell us a little bit about your story about Petey?
Oh, my God. Well, first of all, Petey plays a sport, the only sport that I played. And just going always to his games at the bowling alleys, there was always so much excitement, and when he would go up to bowl, I remember we would all be silent, and there he was, strike, strike, strike. So absolutely, he deserves the recognition. He has brought that sport such prestige, just because of his dedication and actually his passion. So he is very deserving of the award and the proclamation.
Yes, oh, absolutely.
I just want to say I shook the hand.
That's it.
Well, only time I bowled when I was in college, and it was an elective course. So I can admire what he has achieved.
No, yeah, I mean, it's, well, he's not here any longer, but it's interesting to watch him grow up over the last five years that we've, Doug and I at least have served on council. But it was funny, I was watching the final game there, all I could think of, like, he didn't have much elasticity in his mask, it kept on falling down, I just wanted to reach at the screen and pull the mask up on his face, but it was pretty impressive. I mean, he's got a real talent, and he represents Apopka well, so.
That is for sure, awesome. Okay, next proclamation, Harvey Caldwell, his wife had some health issues, so he wasn't able to come down to be a part of this, so what we're going to do is put this off until the first meeting in August, so he'll be back with us then. Presentations, Nicole.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners, Nicole Kennedy with the city's Community Development Department. Today, I want to talk to you a little bit about the Keep America Beautiful program, which is a national program, community improvement program, number one in the United States, and just kind of about their network, what they're about, and how Apopka might benefit if we join their network. So, so, the Keep America Beautiful was established in 1953, it's a leading national nonprofit that inspires and educates people to take action to improve and beautify their community. It provides expertise, programs, and resources to help end littering, improve recycling, and beautify America's communities. The number-one focus, its cornerstone focus, is change of behavior, developing that model of change in the community. It's driven by now more than 650 community-based Keep America Beautiful affiliates across the nation, millions of volunteers, and the support of corporate partners, municipalities, and individuals. So it really takes into consideration that tri-sector partnership among the sectors. So, the benefits of being a Keep America Beautiful affiliate. Keep America Beautiful and its affiliates have delivered more than 386 million in measurable benefits as recently as 2018 nationwide. I'll go over some of those benefits in a little bit from some of our neighbors. The return on investment for this program is incredible. For each $1 invested by local government, Keep America Beautiful communities return an average of $14.55 in community benefits. It offers a tool through its dashboard for community affiliates that offers a cost-benefit analysis, return on investment, measuring for its programs, and a volunteer portal to kind of streamline that volunteer process. And once you join the program, you are able to join the Keep Florida Beautiful program, which is the statewide program, so there's no cost to join that once you become a national partner. The access to grants, it offers an access to community impact grants for creating and expanding local community improvement programs such as beautification, community greening, litter prevention, and recycling programs. To date, they have dispersed $1.3 million in grants today. And being a member of this program also opens up opportunities for grants that have been dispersed through FDOT, exclusive to Keep America Beautiful programs. Another benefit, there's an access to a nationwide network of the communities across the nation of like-minded organizations, training opportunities, and tools to volunteers, materials, and guides with best practices, and media materials. So this is one of our neighbors, so these are just some of the benefits with the city of Orlando. These are just their 2020 accomplishments, these are some of the benefits. Volunteers, 2,232 volunteer hours, they engaged 941 volunteers, 23 sites were beautified. I won't go through all of them, but these are just, just to kind of give you an idea of some of the benefits that come out of this program. So here's another one with the city of Winter Park. Again, very significant engagement with volunteers, 745 volunteer hours, cleaning of five public spaces, improving those spaces, 2,510 pounds of litter and debris, 6,024 acres that have been cleaned, playgrounds and trails, and 6,259 pounds of electronics collected and recycled. So last example, Brevard County, they've been around the longest. They were established in 1981. Some of their, kind of screenshot of some of their programs are the Lagoon Friendly Program, Launch Program, they have a litter quitter business program where they engage their businesses against having waste, Memorial Honorary Tree Planting, and an alternative sentencing program, which offers to those who have a criminal charge, they can maybe achieve some of their community service hours instead of having probation or another sentence through that. So how does this benefit Apopka? So some of the benefits that they would bring to Apopka, these are just some of the ideas, you know, these aren't exclusive, but of course, national credibility through being a national partner, improve outreach and participation in the city's Adopt a Road program. It encourages more local schools to participate in the city's Plastic Bag Recycling Partnership program, which was launched in 2019 when Apopka Elementary was halted for a while due to COVID, but they are now restarting their program now. Educational opportunities for youth and young adults, participation in the Great American Cleanup and America Recycles Days, which is our nationwide event. So we had a smaller-scale America Recycles Day last November, and we'd like to expand that a little bit more. And Apopka Arbor, National Florida Arbor Day, having more events for those. We kind of have something with the Full Age Surtomo Festival and kind of expanding that a little bit more. Of course, access to more community grants and reduction of litter, waste, and graffiti. So what we're asking, the staff is not asking you to take a vote on anything today, we are asking, we have put in our budget, the one-time certification fee, which is required to become a member, on top of the application that we're working on. The cost is $4,500 for our population, and it includes, that's all inclusive for the support in becoming an affiliate, which, you know, training, having someone come down from the national office to work with us, establishing that board, community team, so we can get that going, and getting materials out, really gauging the community, surveying the community through focus area, areas that maybe might be the hotspots, getting those areas cleaned up, and developing what might work best for us. So that's all inclusive for that. We do ask that you keep this in the budget, we think this will be very beneficial, that certification's only for one time, after that, after we come certified, it'll be about $2.85 per year. So very, it's excellent, excellent program for the cause, so we ask that you please consider keeping this in the budget. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Nicole?
I know that we have the Adopt a Road program, so this can be incorporated into this beautify, keep Florida beautiful?
Yes, Commissioner, absolutely. This would absolutely fall under, see, with the Adopt a Road, we want to do more outreach, and this would definitely fall under that. We could definitely utilize things we already have out there, like the Plastic Bag Recycling Partnership, so this could definitely fall under that and kind of revamping that more.
So now I think our Adopt a Road program, they have to sponsor it, right? The businesses, do they sponsor it?
Yes, ma'am.
So now, it would come out of this program? Would they still have to sponsor the roads, the business owners?
Correct, correct, yeah. There's no cost to join the Adopt a Road program, they just would need to let us know that they're adopting it, as far as, they would just need to let us know, make sure the roads are available, and we would get their street signs available through public services.
Okay, are we limited just to roads? I mean, does it include parks, does it include cemeteries, does it include other infrastructure in our city?
As of right now, the Adopt a Road is just roads, city maintained.
No, I know, but with this program?
This, oh, we could absolutely, yeah. We could definitely have that conversation if we move forward with the process, we could absolutely, that's something we could definitely discuss in developing our program, for sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I love this. Anything that can incentivize the citizens themselves to take ownership, that's just a smart way to do it, and it's also a much more beautiful way to do it. We really need to watch for that, you know, the chamber used to do an award on a monthly basis for beautification for homes, and people would take pride in that. So I think any incentive that we can do along those lines, of course, ticks the boxes for me when it comes to littering, graffiti, these different things. These give an image to the city just driving through, and so to have that beautification, I think it's a plus and a benefit. And again, the trees as well. I do have a concern about some of the older trees that aren't cared for, huge, you know, chunks, one came down again on our road. I found out recently that the Texas governor, that's the reason he's in a wheelchair, he was jogging, and a tree, a large branch fell upon him. So I think those are important, that we can replenish those, replace those, and so I really am supportive of this.
Commissioner Smith?
This is a program that will help to improve our environment, as well as our quality of life, so I'm all on board.
Thank you.
Mr. Becker?
I mean, so, I mean, it's low cost, right? I mean, $4,500 is not much in the grand scheme of things in terms of what our general fund is, but, you know, on some of these things, we should be able to do this without the assistance of a group like Keep America Beautiful, right? I mean, we as a city should know where hotspots lie in terms of beautification efforts, where things are lacking behind in terms of upkeep, litter, that sort of stuff. So I'm curious as to what, so outside, so they bring to the table kind of a facilitator to kind of get things off our feet, because I'm confused as to what the program actually brings to us.
Yeah, so Commissioner, absolutely correct. And basically, it's kind of engaging the community of where we are now, kind of helping facilitate that process, because we haven't been able to do that at the staff level. So, yeah, that's, and even after the certification is established, there's a mentoring process that continues from that time at just the cost of the $2.85 per year to stay in that network, so that the mentoring certainly doesn't stop there.
Yeah, because, I mean, certainly, we haven't leveraged really advisory groups in the city of Apopka very well, and I'm sure there's a lot of opinions and feedback that people, just, you know, citizens and residents of Apopka would be able to share. Now, if we're joining this program because we get the fruits of, you know, their skillset, their marketing material, their signage, or whatever access that we have as part of that group, okay, I'm just saying, we shouldn't rely solely on something like this for us to get the ball rolling in terms of beautification efforts in Apopka.
Yes, sir, yes.
Okay, all right.
All right.
Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Ryan Foreman.
All right, good afternoon. So this spring, as you guys know, we did a survey for amenity improvements at Northwest Rec Complex, and before I start, Kelly and IT was an amazing help to me from start to finish on this, so I just wanted to acknowledge that. So the survey closed in May, ran for about a month, we posted on the website, sent it out, weekly newsletter, social media, we had a community meeting at the amphitheater on May 1st, we received 660 responses, and then this is the area we're looking at, you know, mostly, you know, the north, the far northwest side has been earmarked for a long time for improvements, and then when the beetles came and knocked out the pine trees, and we opened up some areas on the east side of Jason Dwelly. So the top choices, so these are the top, the areas that got the most number-one votes, so dog park, multipurpose field, more restrooms, and an accessible playground. And we also, here's our top choices, restrooms, accessible playground, more fields, these are overall, more field lights, dog park, tennis courts, basketball, disc golf was eighth. Top right in response was for an aquatic facility, a pool splash pad, there's others, skate park, pavilions, trails, and fieldhouse. And then our next step is we're going to hire a parks planner that's going to provide a concept map, do artistic renderings, and provide an itemized project budget for the whole thing, and that should, hopefully sometime in the fall, we should have that information. Any questions?
So none of this would come up in budget workshops for this year?
Some of it, some of it will. So I put field lights in for the, I put field lights in, but as far as more extensive stuff, some of it's on the wish list, some of it we're looking for grant funds, like an ADA playground, we think we would get in a grant, it's on the wish list, but we think we'd be able to get help on a grant with that. Some of the other stuff, we're going to wait to see what the parks planner has to say, so.
So who's the parks planner?
It's going to be contracted out from an engineer, from a does that, landscape architect firm.
Yeah, I mean, the natural question I'm going to get asked if I run into people that took part in the survey, is going to say, hey, we did the survey, we provided feedback, now what?
Right, and that's all incorporated into the information that we go over with the parks planner when it comes back, so.
And the parks planner, that's going to be in the budget for this year?
That's already budgeted, that person's going to be hired this month, and they're going to get to work. We budgeted that, that's in the current year budget.
Okay.
Commissioner Smith?
So the restrooms are not in this budget?
The restrooms are in, yes.
Oh, okay.
As a matter of fact, you guys, the Duke Energy money?
Right.
You allocated funds towards that, and the Duke Energy money, so that is in the budget, yes.
All right. Commissioner Bankson? Good? Commissioner Velasquez?
No, I'm good. I know that, what did we get, 660 responses? I was hoping for a lot more. But, you know, it's a start. Once we start kind of, I guess, moving along, then we may get more input from our residents. But I am happy that with the Duke money, that we are putting bathrooms by the amphitheater, because we're using the amphitheater so much more now, and I'm realizing a lot of seniors are coming out, and the bathrooms where we have them right now is really an inconvenience, and I'm just thankful that we have our staff that actually transports a lot of our seniors up there. So I appreciate that you go out of your way and your staff to basically go out and speak to the seniors, so the bathrooms are definitely, you know, a must for us at the amphitheater. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think, you know, it was kind of like the chicken or the egg, do we get some community input before we get the consultant? I thought at least we'd get some idea, and then he'll come back with a more formalized plan, and then we'll obviously get some additional feedback from the community before we move forward. But I thought, you know, that was a, you know, kind of a smart way to at least get started and find out if there are things that we just completely missed that people wanted, so, thank you, Brian, thank you, and.
I guess that sparked a point. Did you all reference the vision plan that was done like five, four or five years ago? Because some of this is laid out in there, right? I mean, we shouldn't have to start from scratch on these things.
I've seen the plan, I've seen the plan for Northwest, some of it I didn't agree with, quite honestly, so we reached that out.
You don't, I mean, that's all resident-driven, so.
My understanding was that it was mostly staff-driven, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Brian, appreciate it. Okay, next up, street lighting, Pam Richmond.
I'm going to talk about street lighting again. And it's been about, I guess about 18 months maybe since we talked about it last, but I'm going to start with the good news, which is, we have installed 123 new LED lights and upgraded 626 existing lights across the city to LED. So I'm going to show you some of the places where we've been successful, I guess I should say that the lights that we've upgraded, they are in places, you know, some things are already there. We've also, in the places where we've added lights, they were in places where the infrastructure's there, where we could just go out and hang a light without having to pay the cost of, when I say infrastructure, I don't just mean a pole, I mean, the right kind of electric wires are there. And please don't ask me any questions about that, because I'm not an electrician. So this was, oh, I guess you want to see it first. This is on Park Avenue from Oak to Nancy Lee Lane, we've put, we've upgraded 16 lights and added 29 new lights, and I'm aware that there are opportunities there to, where we could add more lights, but we worked with, as I just described, what was there and what wasn't going to cost us any money, except for what the bill for the electric is. Phase two and three on Park Avenue from Oak to Main Street, Alonzo Williams Park, we added two roadway lights, which are the, well, you see them there, and the K-118s. And my understanding about this project is there's some grant money, and when that grant issue is resolved, we will be adding more lights in this area. Sandpiper, we actually had three places, we updated the existing lights to LED from Park Avenue to Thompson, and I think that our Duke Energy representative, he says that there are some more opportunities there where we could hang lights. And then, of course, y'all remember the one that we installed at Sandpiper and Park, that's when Duke Energy came out, after we'd had that unfortunate fatality there. And then also, after we turned Hustler and Sandpiper into a four-way stop, we added a light there, and I think at that location, there might be an opportunity to add one more light. Kitland, we replaced the 10 existing lights and poles with the K-118s, and they put holiday receptacles on the poles, and then around the park, updated 22 lights to LED. Northwest Recreation Center, so far, we've upgraded 148 lights to LED, and there are plans for lights in the future. Buck and Pond, we added lights and upgraded the existing LED, plus we added four roadway lights. Martin Street, this project, we have received a lot of calls and received accolades for getting this in there with the lighting so close to the school, everybody was happy to see that, it really makes a difference. And that's five new LED lights on Martin Street. Fifth Street, from Central to Forest, we upgraded 15 lights along that corridor to LED. This is McGee, oh dear, where's the other picture? This is McGee, oh dear, where's the other picture? I was showing you this picture to, so you would remember what it looked like before we did the improvements at City Center. And there was a picture there showing what it looks like now, but when we were doing City Center, we added 18 Claremont LED lights. And these are the kind of lights that promote a dark sky. They don't filter up, they filter more down. This is the Fifth Street parking lot, where we, when we redid the parking lot, we put 12 of those same Claremont lights. And a picture also of what the dismal state of the parking lot before we updated it and put streetlights in. Vic Road, the 71 existing lights from Lester to Ashworth were upgraded to LED. Michael Gladden, from Bradshaw to Park, 10 existing lights were upgraded to LED. This area bounded on the north by Fourth, south by Michael Gladden, west by Bradshaw, and east by Central. Our representative, Jerry Rooks, drove around the area and looked for opportunities where we could just go in and update the existing lights to LED or add additional lights, because the infrastructure was there. And so we, we had 94 of the existing lights just in this area upgraded to LED. And I'm going to talk a little bit about some future projects. And I'm going to start with Hiawassee Road, because we get a lot of calls for lights there. Yes, it's dark. And we have Duke Energy giving us, looking into this. They're designing it, and they're going to give us a quote. But what they've come up with is we need 23 poles and 26 new lights. And this is one of those places where there's no infrastructure in place, and this is something we'd have to pay for. And just to give you a ballpark number, it's in the hundreds, plus then there's a monthly bill. So I'm just preparing y'all for when we decide that we want to do this, there's a cost associated with it. And then here are some other projects that either are in design or waiting their turn. Jason Dwelly, and actually, South Bradshaw's already done. South Lake Pleasant Road, we can put six lights out there. Votaw from Park to Christiana, we can add seven new, we, we need to add seven new lights, and we can upgrade two. There's more to be done at the Northwest Recreation Center, and then the Super Bowl or the Merge at 441 and 436. There are 36 lights there that, you know, we're at a crossroads. We have to decide, are we going to keep the ones we have, try and upgrade them, or are we going to, they're, they're almost obsolete, meaning in the near future, we won't be able to get parts at all. So we might decide to make a change, or we have to figure out what to do there. But it's not going to be an inexpensive fix, whatever direction we go. But those are DOT lights, they're on our contract to maintain. I just wanted to mention them, because we get calls about those. And the other thing that I wanted to say was that this project, it's, it's been a passion for Edward, and he's really the driving force behind this. And I can't tell you of a day that hasn't gone by in the last three or four months, and we haven't been dealing with streetlights, not just the ones that we're responsible for, but we have a contract with DOT, and we get a stipend every year, and we're required to keep at least 90% of the lights burning. So between what we're trying to do with Duke Energy and what we're trying to do with DOT, it's, I'm going to call it a challenge, but it's a task. And the part with Duke Energy wouldn't be possible without our partner, Jerry Rooks, who, he couldn't be here today, obviously. There was a hurricane at Duke Energy, everybody went to Clearwater. So every, don't call Duke Energy today, you won't get an answer. But this is all about our relationship. It started with Mayor Nelson, when he got us in contact with someone higher up at Duke Energy. And now we have cultivated a relationship. And Jerry, luckily for us, lives in the city, and he just drives around. And when he sees a place, he can just go and add a light, he just calls his crew, and they go out and do it. And in many of these cases, when they upgrade, our cost, Edward, correct me if I say this wrong, our cost for our monthly electric bill goes down. So we're continually looking for those opportunities. I know that there are still gaps out there, but we're doing everything that we can with virtually no budget. I think of, of the 123 new installs, those were all hung with existing infrastructure. There was one where we had to install a pole, which was pretty costly. And then I think the one at Lester, we had, did a light at Lester and Rogers Road, we had to have a transformer installed, and that cost a little extra money, but that one was really needed. So with that, that completes my presentation, and Edward and I are both willing to answer any questions or take any recommendations that you would like.
Any questions for Pam?
No, just, you know, I've, I've actually met with Jerry Brooks, and, and you're right, he's been a great partner. And whenever I mentioned the street, or, of course, when we did the extension on Ponkin Road, that was a big concern, because I told him during the winter hours, by 4:00, it's dark, and if we're encouraging our students to walk back and forth, I know that he did, I think he did put a light up in that area.
He put two lights. Where the infrastructure was, because there's none on the north side.
Of course, by the high school. And you mentioned a lot of the streets that I remember. I, you know, I actually drive around in the evening also, and I know Ed does. So, and it is, and you are correct, it is the relationship that you have been able to cultivate with Jerry Brooks. And he, and he really cares about the lights, because he cares about the students and the schools and just pedestrians in general. And that's part of making our streets safe. So, thank you.
Yeah, from the moment I got involved, that was one of the first things that I really wanted to see happen. And so thank you for making that priority as it should be. Safety's job one. And you're correct on Sandpiper, although the one in front of my house, I wish it wasn't so bright, but I'm glad for the citizens, because it is much safer, and there is opportunity for more there, as you mentioned. So that's exciting to see. And again, I think, I think everyone here is very supportive to see that, because it really does affect many people's lives. So thank you for staying on that, and let's continue.
Commissioner Smith?
And I would say that the citizens are very appreciative. They see the work that's taking place, and they realize that there's a process, so they are being patient, but they are excited to see that there's something being done. And so we want to commend you for what you're doing, and just keep doing what you're doing. And each time I see a light out, and I let Mr. Bass know, he makes sure it gets taken care of immediately. So if more people report those, then we can get those taken care of as well.
Commissioner Becker?
Yeah, and thanks for all the efforts. I, like Commissioner Banks had said, I think everybody up here has championed for greater streetlight coverage, because obviously, the benefit of having well-lit streets is safer streets, and that lessens the burden on our public safety employees to have to respond to those calls. And unfortunately, many of them have resulted in fatalities. But I want to touch on a point that you just made, and we're coming up on budget workshops. So I don't, like, it makes me cringe when you say, if, if we had budget, because we need to fix that disconnect, because we've all up here talked about how street lighting is a focus of ours. So if it's not in what's being recommended for this budget season, it's going to be another miss. I think you'll have willing participants up here. So I think it's definitely needed, we just need to create the budget for it.
And Commissioner, this budget that you see will be coming before you this year, we'll have money in it for lighting. So that's why we wanted to kind of do this presentation, to kind of show you what we've, we tried to do everything we could do first before we started.
On the cheap, yeah.
You know, to at least make those changes. But some of these changes, you know, needed to be done in prior years, as you know, because they were so significant, and Park Avenue was one of them. Some of those intersections are narrow-lit, which is a lot nicer. But some of these other ones that we're having designed, takes a while for Duke to design, design them, and, you know, and things like that. So we want to get all that design and get all those pieces together, so that when we bring you those, you can prior, we can prioritize which ones, you know, that we want to put the dollars out. But there will be funding in this year's budget for, for street lighting, new, new street lighting.
Yeah, I will have to admit, though, I had, I've had one constituent that says we got too many lights now, that are, there's some kind of a lighting formula that he likes dark skies for, he's an astronomer, and he was, he said, we've moved now from a five to a six. So for all of us up here, I think that's a good thing. For him, it's not a good thing. So...
Interesting, you know, what, different priorities for different people. But anyway, I thought that was interesting. Well, thank you, Pam, thanks for all you're doing to light up a popca. Okay. Edward, you want to introduce, or Vladimir, who's going to?
I think Vladimir's going to, Mayor.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. It is with great pressure that we have in front of you, we gave you a copy, the auditors brought a copy of the comprehensive annual financial report, year ending 9/30/2020, and the second report for the ADA. And we have here from Malden and Jenkins, our auditor, Daniel Anderson, who's going to do a presentation for you regarding an audit. And any questions you may have, you can ask him or myself. Thank you.
And I know that Daniel was going to try to come up yesterday, due to the storm, you know, he was going to try to meet with any of the Commissioners who wanted to meet with him. But based on weather, I think a good move, and so, but we're glad to have you today, Daniel.
Great. Thank you. And again, I do apologize for not being able to make it up yesterday, but living on the West Coast with the storm coming through, I do think it was best for me to stay back home. Luckily, there really wasn't much damage that came to my house or what I saw driving out this morning. As Vladimir mentioned, my name is Daniel Anderson, I'm an audit director with Malden and Jenkins, and I was responsible for the day-to-day activities of the city's 2020 fiscal year-end audit. I've got a brief presentation for you here this afternoon. You should have two documents in one, in front of you. One is the comprehensive annual financial report itself, and the second is a document that our firm issues called the Auditor's Discussion and Analysis. Governmental auditing standards do require certain communications to governance at the conclusion of the audit. You can do this in a written or a verbal format. We choose to do it through that Auditor's Discussion and Analysis, and then my presentation is really a summary of that document. I'll just jump right into it. Some brief information about Malden and Jenkins, as it was our first year doing your audit. We are a large regional audit organization with 12 offices throughout the Southeast United States, including two in Florida. Your audit was served from our Bradenton, Florida, office location. Our governmental practice is the firm's largest niche, serving over 600 governmental entities in the Southeast. This includes over 135 municipalities, such as the city, as well as about 140 entities that seek and receive the GFOA certificate for excellence in financial reporting on an annual basis. Our practice is offered, or is pleased to offer 16 hours of free continuing education to our clients on an annual basis. This is typically quarterly. So certainly, Vladimir and Edward, and if any of you want to participate in some wild and exciting governmental accounting topics, you're more than welcome to as well. And then lastly, one thing that we are proud of is about a year ago, one of our partners, Joel Black, was actually appointed as the Chair of the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. His term will be for seven years, so he just completed his first year. So we're certainly proud that the standard-setting body for governmental accounting chose someone from our firm to lead their entity for those seven years. One thing that I'm not going to cover in my presentation, but that is in the Auditor's Discussion and Analysis, is about 10 pages worth of upcoming GASB standards that are coming out. So certainly, Joel's going to be very busy in his role there over the next few years, and we'll certainly coordinate with management as those standards come effective, to make sure that they have the resources that they need to implement them properly. This slide here talks about the opinion that we issue in our auditor's report. Before I get to it, though, I want to let you know the extensive amount of effort that was required to get to this point. And I certainly want to commend Vladimir and her team. She walked into a very difficult situation, and she just rolled up her sleeves and got to work and did a great job getting us the information that we needed to complete the audit. I think you'll be happy with the results of the audit, and I think going forward, you have a great individual leading your finance department. So I certainly wanted to take a moment to commend Vladimir on her effort. The main reason why we perform an audit is to give an opinion on the fair presentation of the financial statements. We have issued an unmodified opinion, which is the highest form of assurance that we can render. So therefore, the financial statements are free of material misstatement, in our opinion. There are several other reports that you'll note in the back of the comprehensive annual financial report document. One is a report we refer to as a Yellow Book Report, which is report on the city's internal controls and compliance with respect to laws, rules, and regulations. This, there isn't an opinion issued in this report, but it's a negative assurance report, so only if we note something during the audit, you'll see in this report. We do have three, three findings that were identified and referenced within this report. I'll go into those in a little bit more detail here in a couple slides. The next report is a single audit report. As the city expended more than $750,000 in state awards, we did have to perform a state single audit. We did perform that audit and noted no issues with compliance or internal controls with respect to the major program which we audited. The next report is an independent auditor's management letter, which is required by the rules of the Auditor General. And this is in regards to the city's compliance with the rules of the Auditor General. There were no issues that were noted within this report. And then the last one is a newer report that came out about two or three years ago, and it requires us to perform an examination with respect to the city's compliance with Florida statutes concerning the investment of public funds. There were no issues noted in our performing of that testing. I'll briefly go over these required communications that we do have. As I mentioned, they are also in written format in that separate auditor's discussion and analysis document. First and foremost, management is responsible for the financial statements and the accounting policies of the city. In performing our audit, we encountered no difficulties in working with management. There were audit adjustments that were prepared and provided to management, which have been posted to the city's records. There were no uncorrected misstatements where we proposed an audit adjustment, and management elected not to post it. We had no disagreements with management over the application of any accounting policies or procedures. At the conclusion of the audit, we did obtain written representations from management on the accuracy of the information provided to us. We're not aware of management's consultations with other accountants, or what we refer to as opinion shopping. There were no significant issues discussed with management to bring to your attention. And then Malden and Jenkins is independent of the city. I mentioned before that there were three findings noted. The first finding was really, all three of these findings are really the result of significant audit adjustments that were made. And based on our materiality levels, they're what we consider material adjustments, which triggers them to be reported as a finding. The first one is in regards to certain accounts receivable and revenue activities, and some audit adjustments that we had to make there, based on timing of when the city collected funds. The second one is in regards to a couple prior period adjustments that we had to make, regarding how the city applied the application of GASB standards on the amortization of, amortization of bond premiums, as well as some accounts receivable and revenue entries, and then a cash entry as well. And then the last finding is in regards to other audit adjustments, which reflected specifically accrued payroll, and then one depreciation expense adjustment that we were required to make. So as they were what we consider to be material, we do report them as audit findings. However, you know, in discussions with management, we're very confident that they have plans in place to make sure that these are rectified in the 2021 fiscal year, so that they will not be repeat findings when we're here to present next year. The last thing on this slide that I want to mention is just a recommendation that we have, that you'll only note within the Auditor's Discussion and Analysis. And this is a recommendation that we've provided to all of our governmental clients since February, and it's really in response to a potential cyber attack that happened on the city of Oldsmar's water supply. You know, cybersecurity is certainly a hot topic, not only just in governmental accounting, but in accounting in general. We do perform certain procedures in regards to cybersecurity as part of our audit. We noted no issues with respect to those procedures. However, you know, most of the cybersecurity attacks that you hear about in the news are related to financial information, where someone's trying to hack into your system and take control of your accounting software, someone's phishing to try and get you to pay, fictitious vendors. This one was a little bit different, where they were actually attacking the water supply system and trying to contaminate the water for that city. So it's just a recommendation, as I mentioned, that we're giving to everyone, to where, since this is a little bit different than what you're used to seeing, you know, you always want to be evaluating your cybersecurity and making sure that you have procedures in place to prevent these attacks from happening. And while nothing's 100% preventable, you also have procedures to detect them in a timely manner, should something happen, and then to mitigate any risk that you have in a timely manner as well.
Well, on that point, just while we're there on the cybersecurity, I know that our chief of IT, Rob in the back of the room, Rob Hippler, I mean, monthly, we put out phishing expeditions, and we've caught a few employees that got caught up in, so we're, we're taking appropriate actions. As to the, the water supply issue, are, all of the, the internal controls are not on the web, so there's nothing that's outside of the, it's all internal, so there's no way that you could hack it. Whereas I know Oldsmar, it was a, they had an external port that, you know, went to the web, and ours does not, ours is all internal, so it can't, you know...
And that's great. And again, you know, this wasn't anything that we found. It's just a, make sure that you... It's just a make sure that you have procedures in place, you know, throwing that out there in case you weren't aware of it. But yeah, certainly, that's good to know that you don't have a similar situation to what they have. Absolutely. So that's the presentation that I have for you this afternoon. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about the presentation, the Auditor's Discussion and Analysis, or the actual financial statement document itself.
Mr. Becker?
Well, first, you made a comment. I just want to expand on that one. Walking into a difficult situation, what do you mean by that?
Well, I think anytime you start a new job, and you know, one of your first days is, hey, the auditors are here to start their fieldwork. You know, when you weren't there, this is six months after the fiscal year ended. You have no knowledge of any of the activities of the fiscal year, what reconciliations had been performed prior to your arrival, and then knowing that you just have a few short months to try and complete the audit in a timely manner.
Okay. I mean, to me, that's B, that's business as usual. I thought something more nefarious. Okay. The, so I kind of lean in on a couple things in the CAFER. And you're, you know, obviously, you're not going to talk about the level of performance. But as it relates to other municipalities, the government agencies that you service, where do we stand, I guess, at the highest level? How do we look?
Well, I could tell you, part of our procedures that are required by the Auditor General are to look at financial information compared to cities similar to the city of Apopka that they've determined. When we perform those procedures, if there was any unfavorable results, we would be communicating that to you. Since there were no unfavorable results, as that goes, you know, that's good from a baseline standpoint. Secondly, when I look at your general fund and the fund balance, there's about just under $15 million of unassigned fund balance. And when you have about $45 million of annual expenditures, that's a pretty good ratio of what you're looking for to make sure that you have the resources that you need until the primary general fund revenues, which are the property tax revenues, come in in November and December. So I think right around 33% is very strong. I typically like people to be around 20%. So when you're at 33%, I think that's very good as well. When you look at your enterprise fund, you just want to make sure, obviously, those are treated as business-type entities. So you want to make sure that they can be self-sufficient, and they're not relying on transfers from the general fund or from other operations to keep those going. I think the enterprise fund information, you know, they're doing pretty well on their own. I think the utility fund has a 400,000 or so operating loss, which you'd like that to be zero. But I think on an annual basis, you may be a little over that. You may be a little under that. So over time, can those be self-sufficient without having to rely on other funds? So it seems that the rates there are seemingly pretty good. So and then lastly, when it talks about the pension plans, you look at the funded ratios for those pension plans. I think they're all around 80, 85%. You know, I know that the pension accounting changed about five years ago, which threw some giant liabilities on the city's books. But when you're at 80%, I think that's with such a long, outlooking liability that you have, I think that, you know, you're meeting the required contributions from the actuary, and you are at a pretty healthy level as far as what your fiduciary net position is to the total pension liability. So those seem to be in pretty good shape as well.
Yeah, yeah, because kind of four areas I would lean into, and you kind of touched on all of them except for one and what you just mentioned. But, you know, our pension obligation, how we look there, health of that obligation over the long, long term, how that impacts our statement of net position. Our general fund reserve, again, I, to your point, you said 20 is fairly healthy, two and a half months' worth of expenditure versus where we're at 30%. You know, and then, you know, the floor is two months' worth, right? 16.67. So I feel like we may be even a little bit higher than the curve in terms of balance as a percentage of our, of our general fund expenditure. And then the last of which is just debt service as a, as a percentage of non-capital expense. I've always thought that it's been in a healthy spot. Where do you think that that fits? Is it high? Is it low comparatively speaking to other municipalities?
Give me one second. That's one that I will have to look up. Are you looking?
And obviously, there's some ebb and flow in that number, right? As the numerator changes, your denominator, and your denominator changes, your percent thereof can fluctuate. But over the past five years, it's fluctuated from anywhere low 5%. And I think on the CAFER, it's at 6, 6%. So right in that 5% to 6% wheelhouse, is that healthy comparatively speaking to other like-sized cities?
That's something that I can get back to you on. I can tell you that because it wasn't something that I made note of to where I'm like, okay, this is something that you should probably be aware of. It's probably not in bad shape. But to give you a really good answer, I'd like to get back to you on that, if that's all right.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. Because that just kind of goes into our, the funding mechanism of how we approach budget season, right? Is, you know, how do you, how do you fund expenditures for the city, one of which is debt service? And knowing where the guardrails are at in terms of what's a really high percentage and what's a really healthy percentage and what's really low percentage? Obviously, no one's at zero. But just to kind of understand, are we in the healthy zone?
Certainly.
So, good, thanks.
Commissioner Smith?
Well, I feel good. And, you know, I spoke about reserves when I came on the board. I thought 25% was all we needed to be. And just that we had 33%, so we're in good shape. And good job. Thank you.
Commissioner Banks?
Yeah, same questions that I had. Where are we, you know, meeting up to the standard? What are the standards that we need to look for? I love standards and practices because it just makes us healthy. I think that it's good that we're a little bit net positive in our reserves because of what we've come through, the uncertainty. Now we're in a position that we can move forward. And, you know, I'm of similar opinion as been stated there. So I love that it is thorough, and I want to know where the holes are. You know, we don't want it just smoothed over to make us feel better. We want to know, are there any areas that we need to be looking at and focusing on more? So I'm pleased with where we're at, and it's better than where we've been in years past. We've just been making progress. So I'm pleased going into this budget season.
Commissioner Blaskis?
Okay, so you get like the most honest answer is that this is not my strength. And I do rely on those who have the strength in this. So just from hearing what you said and hearing what the different commissioners said, and just knowing that we're at 33%, especially in a time when we were dealing with the pandemic, the COVID, and so many. I mean, we literally had to shut down so much. And hearing that we're at 33% just is, is a, is a good place to be at, especially coming out of COVID. And we're going into the new budget session. So, you know, kudos. And, and a big, you know, I have to recognize Gladys Gad, I'm sorry, Gladys. I should know the last name. Vladimir, because she did, I mean, she worked around the clock, and she really brought this so that you can see it, you know, and see that we have progressed and that we actually are in compliance. So, thank you.
Can I kind of wrap it up? The, yeah, I'd like to thank Edward. I mean, obviously, top of the spear, he's, he's really made, you know, given direction to the team. The finance team has just been incredible this year. One of the things it did mention, and I'm, I'm not even sure it's in this, the report somewhere, but, you know, we've reduced since, in the last three years, we've reduced our overall indebtedness, the general fund indebtedness, by 45%. So as much as reserves being at 33%, reducing indebtedness is just as important. So I think that's, you know, I think it's a good sign for the city of Apopka. The one last thing, and I failed to get it into the RFP that, that you, you actually, you won, and so you are an auditor. But one of the things I'd just like for you to just state for the public, one of the things that happened in the last election is that the auditor played, played into the financial game of politics. And I just want to get the reassurances from you and your firm that nobody from your firm will donate any, any money to anybody running for city office in 2022, so.
You can assure, be assured of that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. And then obviously, you know, as it was mentioned at the beginning, we weren't able to have the one-on-one conversations. It would be great for me to come back and do that at your convenience. So you guys just let me know when works for you, and I'm happy to do that. And if there's any information, some benchmarking information specifically, I know there are a couple things mentioned. But I can put some more of that information together and have it available for that time as well. So just let me know.
Awesome. Thank you, Daniel. Appreciate it.
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment if I could.
Yeah, sure.
And just, I want to be clear. One of the things I want to be clear as we move into budget season, I agree, you know, the financials look really good this year. Your reserves are higher than where they would, than, more than the 25%. It's kind of what we targeted. But keep in mind, there were some capital things that we kind of put on hold, if you remember, because of COVID. So that reserve number has some dollars in it that are going to be some of those capital items that we've brought forward. If you remember, you brought some of those dollars forward. So some of that 33% is probably more like 28% or 27% because those dollars will come forward, and those projects will get done in the current year. So keep that in mind. I want you to keep that in mind that just, you know, this is a snapshot in time as of, as of 9/30/2020. Some of those projects, you know, will come forward, and they'll get done. And then the other thing is to keep in mind is I think that, you know, we, Mayor talked about reducing the debt. I think it's, we're trying to put ourselves in position, you know, if this new public safety complex comes on board, and, you know, we're hearing estimates of anywhere from $20 to $30 million to build this, this complex, we'll need to be ready for, for a bond issue. And so I think, you know, if we can get that debt, that debt number, reduce that debt number down, we'll have the ability to take on a bigger project like this of this nature. So I said, keep all those in mind. Also, as we talk through budget, like Kyle was talking about, you know, want to see some money for lighting and things in the current budget. With your reserves where they are now, this gives you that leverage and gives you the ability to call up on some of those reserves now to do, if there's some projects that you really, really, big things that we really want to get done or we really need to get done. So I think all in all, you're in, it's a good financial position. I will tell you this, as a finance person and prior finance director, I rest easy right now. Again, granted, anything can change. The market, you know, we can't control. But I think you're in a good position. And I think, I think you and the staff are to be commended for a job well done, especially through all of this COVID that we've been through and everything. We're in a good position going forward to do the things that you guys have on your horizon.
Great. Any last? Okay, great. Thank you, Daniel. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Edward, any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda, Mayor.
Okay. Susan, public comment?
Hello, Kyle. Hello, Alexander Smith. Mayor Nelson, Doug, good to see you. Hi, Diana Lyer. Susan, it's nice to see you. Mr. Bass and the city attorney. My name is Eddie Poirier. My wife Sheila Poirier died from cancer six years ago yesterday, and that's why I'm actually back here in Florida right now. I run a couple of Facebook pages. One is called Apopka Cancer Cases. The other is called Apopka Moles. Sheila was one of 12 people who died from cancer in Parkland Circle. Almost all died from cancers of the endocrine system. My wife and next-door neighbor, Sessa Castro, drank tap water exclusively 24/7. They died within two months of each other. We told the DOH in 2015 that our backflow preventer failed inspection, and that it had gone six years without being inspected. The city water guy back in 2015 never mentioned that the city was not DEP compliant at the time concerning their backflow preventer program. These devices are designed to prevent contaminated groundwater from blowing, from flowing backwards into the city water lines. Just one bad backflow preventer on one street in one neighborhood can contaminate the whole neighborhood. Now, I pulled in inspection reports for just my street. Now, whether or not these inspections were supposed to be done yearly or biannually, well, if I went biannually, annually, there were 308 inspections missed. If we cut it in half and say it was every two years, well, then 150 were skipped. Back in 2016, Commissioners Kyle Becker and Doug Bankson tried to help solve the cancer issues on my street. Kyle reviewed years and years of records, and Doug Bankson connected me with a UCF researcher who said contamination was in the groundwater in the neighborhood likely, and it's able to continue and get into the water lines through feeder pipes. A backflow preventer would be considered a feeder pipe. I recently developed a friendship with the former Public Services Director, Jeff Weatherford. Jeff Weatherford sent me a text message on May 21st, his last day of work. He said this, "I am asking to break several folks off of the water maintenance and bring in some others from the outside to create a compliance quality group." I've shared that text with you, Commissioners, you've seen it. Jeffrey told me this in a 35-minute phone conversation that we had a memorial day. He told me that the city would have to spend a lot of money to get the tap water and wastewater to be DEP compliant. He said that the mayor did not want to spend the money. What's troubling now is that Mayor Nelson is now in charge of the Public Services Department because there is no longer a Public Services Director. I filed a complaint two weeks ago with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection because Apopka had fired a water supervisor for falsifying backflow preventer test results and for destroying records. I received an email last week from the DEP that said the city had been cited for not turning in multiple years of their annual cross-contamination reports. They have since submitted 2019 and 2020 and are working towards getting current with the testing requirements for backflows. I'm gonna, I guess I'm gonna have to stop because I really can't continue to read the whole thing. But let me just say this, I would be more than happy to help you guys. I'd do it for nothing. I know exactly how we can fix this problem, and I'm going to tell you. And if you'd let me finish, just finish this up, I'd appreciate it. I come a long way to speak, and I haven't been here in five, six years. I think the way you can fix this, Brian, is what we do is we get the guys in the water department. We mail letters out to every single resident, every homeowner, and we tell those people, if you have an irrigation system hooked up to the city water lines, you are required to have a backflow preventer, and it must be inspected annually. Let's send those letters out. Let's see what happens when they come back in. Then you evaluate it. Then you may have to actually go out, house to house to house, and do these inspections. But, you know, we can't bring my wife back. We can't bring any of the others back. I've given up on a lot of things. And, and this is the only time I'm ever going to speak to the Commissioners. I'm never going to come back here again. But I do want everybody to understand that the situation with the backflow preventers is very serious. You know, some of the locals, they're a little perturbed that, that the city's willing to dig into the reserves to, you know, buy the YMCA because they think some of the priorities are backwards. They think the water is more important than anything. And I don't know what killed my wife. I really and truly don't. But I know this, 12 people died on my street from cancer. My next-door neighbor died from cancer. Sheila and the guy next door drank tap water exclusively. So with that being said, let's try to find a way to move forward. I can't help you people. I would like nothing more than to put this stuff behind me. I helped get Mayor Nelson elected. I like Brian. I worked very hard for him. I'm sure a lot of you saw me out there. Diane, you saw me out there in 2017, holding the sign. You said, Eddie, are you back? Yeah, I was back. Yeah, I was back. Anyways, with that being said, you know, there's a lot that's been said about me and I understand and maybe some of it's deserved and I, and I get that, but let me just say this, all of you people, I have respect for all of you people. You guys all have a duty and it's unfortunate. I really think that the Commissioners should consider a slight change to the charter because right now, none of you have any say, and I'm gonna finish it up, Brian, none of you have any say in day-to-day operations. And I think it's important because I've gotten a dozen emails back from you people that say, "Eddie, I'm sorry, we can't get involved in this." Anyways, thank you very much for the time. Brian, I'm sincere with what I'm saying. You have my phone number, reach out to me. I'm here, I would be more than happy to help. We can fix this and we need to make Apopka a better place for everybody to live, work, and play, and that means they need to be able to drink the water. And until you guys address everything that I've brought up, the water is not DEP compliant and is not going to be until that's done. Thank you very, very much and thank you, all of you, for your time.
Thank you. Susan, anybody else?
To that end, I mean, because we talked about it a couple meetings ago, right? When is that scheduled, slated to come back to us, that revision as it relates to the black?
Commissioner, I do not have an exact deadline. I'll get with them and I can get that, I can bring that information back, but I know they're still doing the study for the water and the wastewater system, so.
David Hoffman, Tayside Court, Rock Springs Ridge. Apopka City Police Chief Mike McKinley, a member of the Development Review Committee, deserves much credit for serving as a moral voice and check and balance in opposing the 95-acre Magnolia Terrace project. According to the Apopka Chief July 2nd Edition, Chief McKinley objects to the fact that the project, which features townhome and single-family units, is substantially different than the residential makeup of the surrounding neighborhood. Kudos to Mike McKinley for standing up for what is right and for what is best, long-range, for the citizens of Apopka. My wife and I, just two residents and homeowners here for more than 21 years, applaud him. A voice of ethical judgment, Mr. McKinley also placed a check on inadequate application for a zoning change and residential development at Rock Springs Ridge back in January, apparently instructing the golf group to go back to the drawing boards. To say that Apopka City is engaged in a grow, 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 build, build, build as fast as we can go dynamic is to understate the case. One senses that this hell-bent surge may turn out well or not, or may well not be, as Dr. Pangloss states in his beleaguered traveling companion, Candide, in Voltaire's citary classic Candide, "All is for the best." If all is for the best, somebody must be minding the store. Who is minding the store? At City Hall, who is assuring that we are witnessing smart managed growth that will assure sustained quality of life for Apopka citizens and homeowners? What best practices are being employed? Is there judicious attention being afforded to the impact on traffic, water resources, waste disposal, sustenance of green space, parks, cultured attractions, higher education, and most critically of all, our K-12 public schools? In the 1980s, a new mantra arose, greed is good. As we enter the 2020s in the midst of a pandemic, a new realization has gripped us, density is not good. Indeed spaciousness has been Apopka City's greatest attribute over time. To complicate matters for Apopka, Governor Ron DeSantis and the Republican-dominated legislature just passed a new law further limiting local impact fees. Pay to play at its best, the fallout being that my wife and I will pay more in taxes so that high-powered developers can gain more to expand their wealth. So surreal. What will Apopka City officials do to mitigate the ill effects of this latest contemptible hit against the citizens of Apopka from Tallahassee? Who is minding the store of democracy?
Thank you, Tate. Is that it? Rogers?
Oh. Good afternoon, City Council. I'm really coming today for kind of two particular issues. Back on, I think it was May 21st, I proposed several questions to City Council in regards to the land swap with Rock Springs Ridge. And I know as of today, I hadn't received an official response, so I just wanted to either give you the information again, to kind of say, because the reason I'm asking you this question, I brought it up, but I never got official submittal response. People ask me exactly what their standing is. I haven't been here in the past, I guess, meeting or two, so I just want to kind of get caught up on it as well. In regards to that, the first question was prior to the land swap transaction being completed, will there be an operational budget or cost analysis provided to the residents of Rock Springs Ridge?
No.
No? During the leasing period, will the city or the HOA be responsible for the roof?
I don't think, I don't think there'll be a leasing agreement.
There's no leasing agreement?
No.
So I guess that answers, that, you know, for the third as well. And then I guess the final question in regards to that would be, the land swap itself, was it predicated upon the allowable density for the golf course? How did you come to that number for that particular transaction? Because I know when we were here, maybe a few weeks ago, it was maybe 17 homes that could be built on the site.
The transaction amount, I guess we just, he was looking for developable land and we had those two pieces and it just came out to 2.4 million. Just simple as that.
Okay.
And I'm not sure that the, the agreement is, continues to move, so we don't even have an agreement yet, so I don't, I can't even, so even these answers I'm giving you might not even be the, the end, end game.
All right. And then the other thing that kind of came up that was presented to me or brought to my attention, particularly last week and I guess maybe a couple days ago, the Apopka Voice had mentioned kind of making South Apopka a priority. And I know for many years, there's been a discussion whether the city of Apopka, whatever, annex South Apopka. I know from 2004 to currently, there's been an interlocal agreement to look at those particular issues and things of that nature. What really is the city standing on that? Are they planning to incorporate a lot of these enclave areas that's in the county into the city? And it's just, you know, it's a general question that people just kind of, with these things that's going on, and we're going into election season, so we know this stuff is gonna come up again. But, you know, I just want to really be on the record, like, really, what's the plan? At some point, I think, I don't think you guys want to completely take it all in at one time, but I think we should at least propose some type of plan to, to address those particular issues and concerns. So I know there's been things about level of service and, but what exactly is that? So that's just a general question. I'm not gonna be here and belabor the point, but I think it's time for us at least to take a, a closer look at what exactly is the plan moving forward for those areas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Touch on that for like one second. I mean, I, I think multiple people up here have been willing participant to workshop that out, you know, and I'm, I'm awaiting the date. So, I mean, because, you know, you can look at annexation multiple ways. I mean, voluntary annexation, that's gonna take a lot longer because you're gonna rely on voluntary annexation requests coming in. The forced annexation by ordinance, which is the one we really have to explore, right? Because if we do it on a grand scale, level of service, you know, that's, you know, you hear that all the time, but it's anecdotal at best right now. I mean, you know, we'd have to look at Orange County, if we're talking level of service from public safety's perspective, you know, sheriff's response, Orange County fire response. You know, you could probably look at a piece of paper and understand how many residents live in the unincorporated Orange at this point and then apply, like hookup fees for utilities or impact fees that they would have to pay into, to subscribe to those city services. So there's a number out there, what that number is, I think is worthy of exploring because if we know that number, then we can start having conversations about if we do an annexation by ordinance, you know, how much are residents going to have to pay in for that? How much is the city willing to invest in that? Is there state dollars at play that we could, we could use? I, I kind of look at it in the same sense of what Orange County is doing with the Septic Sewer Program right now. You know, there's a certain amount that the residents are paying that are getting the benefit of that transition. There's part that the Orange County is putting into and there's part of state dollars that are coming in, if that's the area that we want to explore. And at the, at the last, you know, and to further expand that point, it doesn't have to be just South Apopka at this point. I mean, if we wanted to use the opportunity to square off some edges that are naturally occurring and take in some additional tax base along with that annexation, I think that's worthy of exploring, at least having the conversation. I think we need to do that.
Michael, you want to weigh in on?
Well, I think you've, in, in dealing with just the legal aspects of annexation, there, Commissioner Becker was correct there, you have the, the options of, one is the voluntary annexation, that's gonna be lot by lot by lot. Then there is the, if you want to call it involuntary annexation, which was the ordinance is done, then that's taken to the, to a vote of the electors. Now, there's a third rail, a third option, or a third rail, which is annexation of enclaves by interlocal agreement with the county. I have done these in my previous employ from the county perspective, but one of the things in, in regards to the city we need to look at is what exactly are we going to, is the city going to assume as part of an annexation by interlocal agreement? All of those issues are then raised and put on the table in discussions with the county. It is questions of utilities. I know that one of the other concerns is that are the roads that the city would be assuming, are they up to city standards? Because if you're going to just assume the roads at their current level, their current quality, and they are not up to the city's standards, now the city's got to incur the costs of doing the improvements to the infrastructure, the roads' infrastructure, and these are all things that are to be contemplated. Now, I don't, we haven't had any, at least I have not been privy to any discussions with Orange County in order to sit down with them and plan such a, an agreement. I know that I have been discussing with community development, the opportunity of going back to the county and reconsidering or reexamining the joint planning agreement and perhaps converting such an agreement into what the stat, Florida statutes allows, which are, they're ISBA's, they're interlocal service boundary agreements, in which then the cities and the counties agree to a area which can be subject to annexation and as well as agreements as to utility, provisions of utility, provisions of solid waste, other, other infrastructure agreements that can be provided. Creation of an ISBA, and to my knowledge, Orange, there are no ISBA's in Orange County. I came from Volusia, in Volusia, we dealt with five different ISBA's with five different cities, which allowed for property owners to annex into the city without having to be contiguous or compact with the current city boundaries. It does create a weird hodgepodge, but all of that jurisdictional questions are determined in the agreement. So that is an option that we've wanted to raise with Orange County. I think there's a concern at the county level of an unfamiliarity, unfamiliarity with the concept of ISBA's. I know that community development has reached out as something that we, the city of Apopka, are looking at to convert our JPA into an ISBA, which may then address these issues when it comes to not just South Apopka, but those other areas adjacent to the city which are capable of receiving city utilities and are outside the city, and then this is somewhere where we can bring them into the city and then bring the adequate benefits to the city in order to then pretty much control what would be the ultimate boundaries for the city. We would bring that, bring those in and therefore pretty much control what we would be looking at incorporating within. So that is an, is an option, whether we want to incorporate that into examining South Apopka, that is something that, that can be taken into consideration.
Yeah, and all valid options. I just, you know, at some point, because I think we all saw the, I don't, I won't speak for everybody, but I read the article that was out there, it's a two-part series that The Voice put out there, and I think it was a call to action of all the elected officials that service this area is to do that. And, you know, on their second article they put in there, talking about the sunshine law, precluding us from all getting and putting our heads together on this topic, but, you know, we can, we can notice this all day long and have all those people that were listed in those articles come together and, and put our best foot forward in terms of coming up with our definitive go-forward plan. So again, I just want to stay on the record, I'm open to having that conversation.
Mr. Smith?
Well, you, you know my stance. I, I think South Apopka has been overlooked for years and they're deserving of being considered to be a part of the city. And so I'm still putting forth efforts to make sure that that takes place, and not just South Apopka, there are other parts of Apopka behind Pizza Hut. There's areas also that needs to be incorporated into the city. I firmly believe that the government that closes to you can provide you the best service and can provide it cheaper. And so therefore, I'm in support of making this happen. But I do have a question for the attorney. What is ISBA, exactly what does that stand for?
It's interlocal service boundary agreement. And it is, it's a secondary provision in Chapter 171, which allows local governments to, basically cities enter into agreements with the, I'm actually pulling it up, with the county, to determine jurisdictional questions. For example, I just, only because of my familiarity, because I just, before coming here, I was actually redrafting the Volusia County intercer, in ISBA with the city of New Smyrna Beach. It governs certain aspects where as lots become annexed into the city, then the jurisdiction of the roads will shift from, from county to city. And by jurisdiction, we mean not only just the maintenance of the roads, but as well as law enforcement jurisdiction. Now, in an actual ISBA, all of these jurisdictional questions are all laid out in the agreement. So it's all spelled out. Now, these agreements are negotiated back and forth between the county and the city in order to then finally come to an agreement. The agreement is executed by both, in our, in our case, it would be executed by the Orange County Commission and by the City Council. And then that agreement would govern the annexation schedules for properties. It would allow, one of the advantages of the ISBA is if we create an ISBA, so we create a new boundary, so this is the boundary of what's deemed the ISBA. So we'd have the area around Apopka, or those areas where there is a high anticipation that we'd be looking at properties to be annexed in. Once within the ISBA boundary, a, a single lot can be annexed into the city and it doesn't have to be, it doesn't, doesn't have to meet the requirements of 171 for compact and contiguous. The agreement will allow that property to be annexed. For example, one of the provisions we had in our, in the Volusia-New Smyrna Beach ISBA was if you had a street that had 10 lots, as soon as 50% plus one of the lots was annexed into the city of New Smyrna Beach, the jurisdiction of the road would be turned over to the city. In the, but the county had to bring the road up to the city's standards before it could then be turned over to the city. That was an agreement that was laid out. There's also, that's, that's one aspect. The other is creating an interlocal agreement with the county for the annexation of enclaves. Chapter 171 allows that to occur. In that type of an agreement, again, we would be, we, the city would spell out that certain standards have to be met before the properties are transferred over from the county to the city. An interlocal agreement allows for the city to specifically name certain streets that the city will take into its jurisdiction as long as they meet the level of service that are required of. I mean, we don't necessarily have a issue with unpaved streets here in, in this area, but those are some of the issues that, that come up, either doing it just on a straight interlocal agreement, and there is a, there is a restriction when it comes to an acreage that you can annex by interlocal agreement at a time under 171. But the ISBA would be a holistic approach to the entire future growth estimate, I guess, for the city in order to take it, take into consideration, these are areas around the city that we anticipate will become a part of the city of Apopka and therefore this agreement with the county will lay out the mechanism and the process for that annexation as well as that transfers jurisdiction to move ahead and go forward.
And, and once that annexation takes place, then the city could then change the land use as well?
Yes. A lot of the, in, in some aspects, there are certain services that can be provided under an ISBA and that you enter into agreement, such as if an, theoretically, we would enter into an agreement with Orange County and then determine at, from this point forward, those properties that lay within the ISBA, their building permits would be done through the city. Inspections would be done through the city. Fire inspections would be done through the, the city. They would, those folks would in essence be within the city, yet their properties might still be deemed unincorporated. And then they have the option to simply come in and annex and as you would, they would submit a voluntarily, voluntary annexation application. They would not need to be, meet the compact and contiguous aspect of it. They would come in, it would be processed like an annexation, it would be adopted by the council and then those properties would be annexed. But the ISBA would then govern, here are the areas where the city will provide the services, here are the areas where the county will provide services, and then allow for that transition as more of the properties come into the city. If there's some services that are being provided by the county, they'll eventually transition to be city services. But these are all laid out. I mean, these ISBA's are, are complex documents, are very detail-oriented, which will, will basically put forth the relationship between the county and the city in terms of those properties that lie within the boundaries of the, of the agreement.
Mr. Smith?
I appreciate you, Roger, bringing these things forward. It has been a frustration, both from the, you know, the chill factor of sunshine and not being able to discuss it freely and, and so to have something like that, you know, this has been the most that's ever happened just in this conversation. So I'm excited about that. One of the frustrations for me was that there was no particular entity to deal with. So who do you talk to? And different groups would be for and different ones against and very adamantly on both sides. So I, I don't have a real appetite for forcing things upon our citizens. However, at the same time, the ISBA, that may be an answer worth approaching. The challenge to that is we've also had the frustration of citizens saying, why is it, I use the Swiss cheese, you know, why is it, who's in charge? cheese, you know, why is it, who's in charge? And who's in charge of my street? And those different things. So, if there's an agreement that the county has to bring it up to a level, that will help us on the fiscal side of, of, how are we going to make this happen? Because we have to do it, we have to do it in an affordable way and with a game plan. So, you know, I'm definitely open to these conversations and, and would love to see us find some resolve for, for these issues.
Commissioner Boskis?
I did read the article. I, what I find interesting is that this has sort of been a legacy issue. It just hasn't been in the last four or five or 10 years. It's been something that's been ongoing. But what I have seen was, you know, I actually started to write down all the positive things that I feel that the, our city government, our local government, has done in addressing many of the issues and concerns on the south side of Apopka. And I understand that this annexing, this south side of Apopka, the county side, really does take a partnership. And I, I really believe that in the last, I don't know, five, 10 years, we've had representation at the county level. And I feel that in the last few years, we've had, we've cultivated some type of relationship with the county. And I certainly sat on the planning and zoning board for two years for Orange County, and there were a lot of things I learned about this, you know, the south side of Apopka, that when I sat here during my time as the city commissioner, I realized we could have had this relationship, and we could have done more for the south side of Apopka. And now that we do have a commissioner that does sit on, on the Orange County, I'm learning, you know, let's, let's have a partnership. Let's see what we can do until we get to that level of, is, is annexation the best course in order to bring the city together? Certainly, what's important to the south side of Apopka has always been the level of services. And I feel that we are trying to meet that standard for them. But we have to have a relationship with the county. And it's just not different departments. We have a commissioner sitting there. Let's have a conversation with her. Let's bring her into it. As far as the sunshine, we get away from that by having a workshop, by bringing everybody to the table, bringing the public in. I am for workshops, because it allows not just the, the elected officials from the city, but elected officials from the county. And even if we have to bring our state reps to come in, because they also play a part in the, you know, in how we spend our money and the revenues that we get. So, having a conversation is a start. And a real conversation, you know, every, and you're right, every time there's an election, we say the same thing, but it doesn't, it doesn't move the needle forward. So, I would love to have this conversation. But at the same time, let's also, you know, bring to the table what we have done, because we haven't ignored south of Apopka. We have not ignored them. I think we have done, we have brought some, we have raised the level of service for south of Apopka. Just drive around and see that. I've seen roads paved, I've seen lights, I've seen businesses come in, the hospital came in, we have new housing on that side. We had a partnership about two years ago. I went to the groundbreaking. We bought Habitat of Humanity. What did we bring? 50 homes. So, we are doing something. I think what, what the Apopka voice was saying is, so when are we going to be one Apopka? That's the conversation. But at the same time, let's come to the table, and let's say what we have done that's positive, and how do we get to the next level? Again, I think a workshop, just to kind of sit down and, and, and put everything on the table. But for me, what's important is that a large part of the south side of Apopka sits in the county. We have a commissioner, bring her in, and they have, they have the money. Don't we depend on them to give us money for certain projects? So, let's bring them in. And again, a conversation. So, I'm looking forward to that.
Okay, thank you. All right. Do we have somebody else to?
Can I speak on items?
Oh, on item, okay, all right, okay. Okay. Consent agenda. Everybody had a chance to look at that? If so, look for a motion to approve all seven items?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Banksen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2838.
Ordinance number 2838. In ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use amendment of the Apopka Comprehensory Plan of the city of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from county rural to mixed use for certain real property generally located on the southwest corner of Sadler Road and Golden Gem Road, owned by Carl C. and Donna S. Redder, comprising 1.79 acres, more or less, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Jean?
Jean Sanchez with the, with the Community Development Department. This is a request to approve the Redder Golden Gem parcel ID ending in 066, future land use amendment from county rural to mixed use. The property is located within the one-mile radius of State Road 429 and Kelly Park Road. It is located on the southwest corner of Sadler Road and Golden Gem, approximately 1.79 acres in size. Due to its location within the KPI Form-Based Code area, mixed use future land use designation is required before it is developed. The subject parcel will be allowed a minimum density of five dwelling units per acre and a maximum density of 10 dwelling units per acre, and a minimum .5, maximum .75 floor area ratio. The rezoning application will be based on the requirements of the KPI Form-Based Code required for development. The DRC and Planning Commission recommend approval. The recommended motion is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2838 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on July 21, 2020. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Okay, any questions for Jean?
Yeah, so this is going to be a thematic of the whole hearing. It's more staff-related. So, this one, and I had asked before, and I know other commissioners have shared the concern, but on the docket today, we've got 51 over-capacity seats contributing to the over-capacity situation. And I know that in meetings passed, commissioners, in order to aid us in our decision-making process, wanted to see what the net effect of that over-capacity was going to be on a case-by-case basis. And so, I'm just asking staff, do you have a point of view on where this puts us?
Deferred to our Community Development Director.
We've, we've reached out to Orange County Public Schools to ask them for a tracking log sheet for all the different developments, because it's not just the developments in the city, but it's also ones that are affecting the schools that are going in the county. So, they, but we did contact Christopher Mills from Orange County Public Schools to get that tracking, so that we can find out exactly where all the schools are up to date. And then that's what they do for, you know, their, their, their living, I guess you could say. In regards to all the developments that we've got, one of the caveats that we do have is that as we approve the developments, the, the developers also know that they will not be able to get building permits or development permits for theirs, for the lots until the concurrency is paid for, for, to, to pay for those seats that are being created due to the development themselves. In those, basically, anytime you have a, a development, if there's 40 seats that are, or 40 chairs that are being created from a development for, do the formula that OCPS does for each of the developments with, based on the number of residential homes, it creates a certain number of seats. And the developer cannot build until they pay into the system to, to take into account for those seats. So, that's, that's where, we've got that as a backup, since we don't have an active agreement that Orange County and OCPS has come up with to be able to send to us for, for review and for approval.
So, if the final say is that concurrency, why do we even track capacity at this point in terms of this stage of the game?
Well, they still, we still have to, it, it, that's part of, I guess you'd say, a holdover from the previous agreement, that, that we still ask for a capacity determination to find out how far down the hole, I guess you'd say, we are. And that allows the, the county to see how many developments we've got, how many developments the county has themselves, that, that are going to be affecting the school system. When those developments are paid into for those seats that are, that they're, that they're creating, they still have to track those in order to show where they are to be able to build new schools or to add to additions to the schools or anything else.
Right, because they, they want data to be able to make a good decision.
Yeah, they have to do that, because Florida statutes doesn't, this is the wacky part with our, with, with the legislations that was created 25, 30 years ago, is that the school systems can't build or build new schools or add school, to schools until they're way over capacity, which is, it's kind of bad.
Yeah, and I get the systemic problem around that. It's just, again, we've vocalized this on many times, and yet, we still don't have what I perceive to be as good information to tell us how bad we're perpetuating an existing problem. I mean, this, this one has 12.79, and I, I think there's two other pieces of business, because it was two other ones that were 12.79. So, it's not 36, it's 12.79. But you got 15.07, 4.06, 14.93, 4.58. So, when I'm looking at this in a vacuum, okay, these are numbers, but that doesn't tell me anything. What's, what's the gross? What's the aggregate of all of these things? And there's a natural ebb and flow. And then what you have layered across that is our natural, you know, factory work, right? In the city of Apopka, we do probably 400 on average, give or take, COs a year. And so, those, that's what's actually driving students into the school. So, actually knowing that number too, combined with where we're sitting at, at the aggregate, but absent that, I mean, we keep on talking about how we're over capacity, over capacity, and I'm sitting, I'm supposed to sit here and blindly approve it, to say, well, it's, it's concerning, but let's still approve this anyways.
It's definitely concerning. You still have the right to turn it down. What I'm letting you know is that there is, there is a mechanism at the end of the, end of the road that says that they can't build until they pay into the system.
There's a lot of people in this room, not just me, probably a lot of developers that are sitting in this room, that would like for staff to equip the council to make a more efficient decision on their behalf too, in all fairness.
If, if we had the tools to, to have an agreement that would allow us to do that, kind of like the CEA process used to be able to do, we'd be able to do it. But right now, our hands are tied, because there is no active agreement.
I, I disagree. We, we can have a directional number, based off of the developments that we've approved up to this point, that are still in some level of planning phase, to say, here's how many dwelling units they have, apply what that percentage is that Orange County Public Schools uses for them, and have a view of that. Now, if there's, if there's other ones that are in unincorporated Orange that are contributing to those schools being even more overcrowded, that just perpetuates that problem. I mean, but from where Apopka's contributing into it, I need that personally to make a decision. And I don't, I don't have any of that.
And that's, that's what we've requested Orange County to, Orange County Public Schools.
Orange County is Orange County. We're a city of Apopka.
Any other questions for staff? The applicant like to come forward?
And I just want to say that I have, that's the same question that I asked before. If, I understand that Orange County is keeping track, but can't we have somebody in-house that keeps track of the impact that we are making, and as reference to the number of approvals that, that we make as far as housing is concerned? And I know that the county plays a part, but at least if we had an idea as to what we're doing on a day-to-day basis, because I did the same thing. I went through each one, and every one of them basically impacted high school, we only had one to impact the elementary schools. And that's because we have the K through eight school coming on board in 2022. But, but if we just had a number that you could just tell us at each commission's meeting, you know, we already, 300 seats over capacity, it's going to add another 25.
We can, we can take the, what OCPS generates for each of the subdivisions, which is part of this record, and, and, and put the numbers together. I just, I honestly thought that it would be better to get the full picture, because Orange County is contributing also. Yes, we are the city of Apopka. Yes, we do have these developments. But the county, OCPS is the one that tallies all of that, and they're the ones that are responsible for building the schools, based on what we're doing and what Orange County is building.
So, the question is, all the developments that we have approved, do, are we at the point of overcapacity where OCPS should be building a new school? I mean, I know they're building K through eight, but I can guarantee you, from my experience, when I moved into Rock Springs Ridge 16 years ago, as soon as they opened up Wolf Lake, it was over capacity.
Yep.
So, and I, I guarantee that this K to eight school, the same thing's going to happen. So, are we at the point where we need to ask OCPS, we, we have, we have approved all these developments, so within the next three to five years, this is the number that we're projecting, is, are there plans for a new school? Because it takes them three to five years to even start to build a school.
Yeah, well, OCPS is constantly looking at the numbers to see when they would need to build a new school, and looking for property for where they need to build it. One is off of Avian Park, Avian Park Boulevard, which they've got another school site. Whether or not that goes, we don't know yet, because there's a, there's a charter school that's also putting a, a spin on it. They're looking for property to build in that same area. So, OCPS, obviously, they don't want to start building another school. One of the things that I, I think what we can do is reach out to OCPS and have them come in and let you, and tell you the, the process that they have to go through, and how much overcapacity, what you, you were mentioning, overcapacity we're causing, and when that is going to result in a new school.
School member boards, or bird, did send us a package of that. They sent us, she sent us a, a nice PowerPoint presentation about all their methodology, all that sort of stuff. She sent, I'm looking at the Excel sheet that she sent over to us for all the, the schools here in Apopka, current enrollment, permanent capacity, and then the resulting overcapacity. Every single one of them's overcapacity at this point.
Correct.
What I don't know, for us to make a mature decision up here, a data-driven decision, it's, okay, we, and each one of these applicants have turned in their school capacity assessment. We know what, what schools that they're currently going after. And you just expand this out to say, okay, here's how many are stacked against this one, based off the developments that we've approved thus far, knowing the velocity of how much these developments take to do it. It's not like, I'll use the first example, 12.79, start going to that school day one. I get it, there's a, there's a natural horizon. But for us, and I'm going to use Mr. Hoffman as an example, if he gets up at the podium or the lectern there and, and challenges us around, hey, you've just done land use change and just added 51.43 new students into the mix, and you're already overcapacity by, I'm just going to do some loose math here, you know, 15 to 2,000, 1,500 to 2,000 students in our Apopka area of schools, I don't really have any feedback from Mr. Hoffman. I'm just, yeah.
Well, the, the feedback is that they aren't in the schools right now. And the other feedback is that because of the concurrency payment system that they, that those developers have to do, they have to pay for those students. And you can't get the new schools until you pay into the system for those new students.
Correct. And so, I'll go back to the, the first point. If it's a meaningless data point at this point, why do we even contemplate it in the lead-in packet?
In order, well, in order to build the new schools, you have to have a certain number of students overcapacity.
Actual overcapacity or planned reserved over-
Actual overcapacity.
So, actual overcapacity is at concurrency, not now.
Correct.
My point. So, if right now, we're just reserving capacity, is what we're doing right now. The school system is reserving it, because before, we used to do the enhancement agreement-
Correct, yes.
-that they would pay into-
Yep.
-to reserve the capacity. If we're saying that everything is driven by actual cheeks in the seat, and that is, is satisfied at concurrency, and that's where we, is more appropriate to have the conversation, then I think the capacity or overcapacity at this point, if there's no corresponding OCPS process that we're trying to satisfy or make sure that we're aligning to, it becomes a meaningless data point that we shouldn't spend, you know, 30 minutes talking about.
Well, what, what you are doing is, you are- Well, what you are doing is, you are contemplating those students going into the school. That concurrency is that end game.
I agree, but I'm saying, but if a developer has to pay for those seats at concurrency, meaning when they want to go dig dirt and construct, and they can't do that because they haven't satisfied an OCPS mandate that they pay in for that concurrency, that's for them in Orange County to work out.
And we're stuck in the middle, kind of thing.
But what I'm saying is, if we do feel like this KPI or this metric is valuable for us to consider, then I don't think we have enough reporting or context to understand what 12 means, what 15 means, what 12 means. It's, you're taking, you're operating in a vacuum, and you can't look at a holistic aggregate number.
Well, each of the student stations runs about $10,000.
It's a what?
Each of those student stations runs about $10,000. So if there's 12 students, you're looking $120,000. And that doesn't, I mean, to me, that doesn't pay too much. I agree.
Yeah.
Do you want me to get somebody from, try to get somebody from Facilities, OCPS, Facilities?
Well, I mean, in prior meetings, we've, this is the frustrating part. So we've all talked about this. We want this level of insight to be able to make a better decision. We've all sat up here and said, we would love to have OCPS or Orange County come and talk with us. Let's do it. Because we have to come up with a strategy to say, what does good look like, or where should we honestly feel uncomfortable approving land use changes or zoning changes if it's going to materially increase our overcapacity situation?
Yeah, you've got to have a level of comfort, I agree. But that's what I had said about 15 minutes ago. I can get somebody from OCPS to come in and talk to us about that.
Again, this is just our fundamental disagreement, right? We, as the City of Apopka, should have some directional point of view around where we're sitting, what we're contributing to the overcapacity on an aggregate scale.
Agreed.
Like, and we don't have that, is what I'm saying. Correct?
Correct. And that's where OCPS is the expert in regards to what this, what our actions are occurring.
Okay.
We don't create, we don't create
Jim, can I take a run at, like, maybe creating the report myself, and I'll just run it past staff to see if it's something that you all can sustain on a long-term basis?
Sure.
Because I feel like this is not necessarily complicated work to do for us to be able to make the right decision up here. But I'll work with you.
But I know that, you know, like OCPS, the last three or four schools they've built have all been in Horizons West because the growth there has just been exponential. And for the next couple of years, I guess they'll be completely built out, but that would be the model for kind of what Apopka's kind of facing, the next, you know, the next wave of home building is what Horizons West has done. So it would be, you know, their example would be one that we would want to, you know, kind of take a look at and see how that, how we would
Yep.
measure up against that.
That's the heartburn that I have, is we're being charged a mitigation to make up this difference, but it's put into one kitty and then it's sped over there. We don't have any assurance that it will be spent here and that the school will be built here when we need that. So you've got developers that are half-built out
Yep.
that that's supposed to be our comfort level is, well, we won't let them finish that until this is done. It's just this constantly moving piece of jello, and that's hard to stand on.
Yeah, that's one of the things, when I was over in Claremont Lake County, they actually had their jurisdictional areas and whatever area created the homes or the impact and paid into that system, they couldn't go more than one other jurisdiction away. So not jurisdiction, but there's a boundary line. So if something was built in Claremont, you couldn't take that money and build something into Varys. Right now, like you just said, if something, if, you know, we're creating all these homes, we're creating that concurrency, the funding that's coming into the OCPS system, and then all of a sudden, it goes down to Horizons West or around the east side or something like that, then we don't have any assurances that it's going to be built here to take into account the capacity that we're causing.
Unlike our impact fees for police and fire
Yes.
so that future residents here don't have to pay for future infrastructure.
Exactly, exactly.
That's the part that's frustrating. Again, that's, I think we're all on the same page there. And it's a challenge because we've got a state limitation that says you have to over, you have to have more students than you have building for before you can start. It's frustrating, but again, we're the ones that have to answer to our constituents, and it would just be nice if we could say, these numbers, this mitigation, will go back into what we need. Then we're building on something solid that we can bank on.
Mr. Velasquez?
Well, no, I mean, that was the concern. Yesterday, when I had the agenda review, that was probably the topic, was what are we doing with this overcapacity? And all of them, every developer that we're seeing today, they're building, and yet, there's no room in the schools, so. And then I remember you assured me that they can't start building until this is satisfied.
Until they pay into the system, which goes somewhere else, or could go somewhere else. So that, you're right, that the insurances have to come from
So we're almost kind of like approving these new developments, and then at the same time, we're stagnating them. I mean, we're saying to them, all right, you can't build until this gets satisfied, so why are we continuing this? It seems like just, like we're going around in circles and we're not getting anything accomplished.
And one of the things that I have noticed is that the amount or the percentage of capacity in the schools doesn't seem to be going that much higher than what it was three, four years ago. It might, you know, one developer might create four seats, and the same-sized development is creating four seats, but it's cumulative. So up until we get a new school, those numbers are going to keep going up in terms of what we're, what we're creating for overcapacity. It might be four now, four now, four now, but all of a sudden, we've got 12 seats that are overcapacity, and it keeps going that way. And that's one of the things I was going to look at with those, with the sheets that we get, is how many more seats for each of those developments that's overcapacity is, how many seats are cumulative? Which I think that was what you were looking for, Mr. Becker.
So how far back do you want to go, Commissioner Becker?
Well, I mean, I think any development that's currently in flight, either been approved or still is actually constructing out, because, again, there's a couple of things at play here. You have the land use change, what that overcapacity looks like. You get to concurrency, you figure that out. But the last kind of, you know, we could potentially be creating a checkpoint from the city, because like I said, we only crank out, what, maybe 400, give or take, COs a year? So those are actually people able to reside in those dwelling units
Yep.
that are actually going to put people in the actual schools. I mean, that's the biggest concern. So understanding that horizon or the pacing or the velocity of that, because if that's stretched out over a, you know, a five- to six-year period, okay, that maybe, that risk mitigation is there. If it's condensed and we're doing all that within a two- or three-year period, then we obviously know that certain governments don't, you know, aren't able to adapt that quickly.
But they also, but that also won't help if we don't get those schools to fill those new people.
No, I'm not, yeah, I'm just saying, to be able to have that insight to say, okay, we're not wasting five hours contemplating this business versus, hey, it's a valid checkpoint, they're going to add 12 seats, but if we know that this school's got this X amount of overcapacity right now, but that capacity is only growing by 2% versus a school that's going, growing by 20%, it's a different conversation. The risk appetite is different. The risk profile for these things are different.
Yeah, some of that attrition can
Correct.
You're right, it goes.
Again, because, again, if we have residents that are concerned about overcapacity, okay, that's a pretty binary topic. But if we can talk about overcapacity in terms of horizon or the velocity of percent increase of that capacity, that's a much more palatable conversation for us to have.
It's the numbers.
Right.
Well, and the, and the information School Boardman Bird gave us is that Apopka High School's currently 204 students overcapacity, while Calva High School is 700 students overcapacity.
Under, under, under.
Undercapacity. But we need 1,000 students overcapacity in order to build a new school.
The question is, do you then move 500 over to Wakala and give you capacity?
Do you change their zoning districts?
You disrupt 500 kids' lives to put them to Wakala.
But then you have where their parents invested in a community
Right.
because they were designated for that school.
Yeah, that's why the school board doesn't like changing those zoning districts because it affects so much.
I know, you know, that's why some areas in Apopka are being developed because of the schools that are designated to those developments. You know, the K-12 is spurring a lot of development by the north side because they all want to go to that new school.
They know it's coming.
Okay, we
So if we know it takes 1,000 overcapacity, and they're already at 200, if we had that measuring stick, so we know how close we're getting to the 1,000
Then we start to put pressure on
Then we start to put a pressure on that we need to move up
Yeah.
into that 10-year plan. So thus, that's why we need the numbers.
The question is, what happened is, they got jammed up when '07, '08 hit. They had all these projections for all the houses to be built. They were building schools
Right, the market crashed.
Right, and then now they've got empty schools or half-capac. So they, they don't want to build a school too early, and obviously, we don't want them to build it too late.
Too late.
And so you're, you know, it's that fine line between, you know, too early and too late, so that the kids, you know, you're not moving them around, and yet, there's, you know, a quality school they can go to.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, all right. I don't know if the applicant like to come forward? I mean, just, I don't know. Oh, no. Jeff, how's your back? I mean, I don't know if you can add anything to the, you know, just the general discussion. I don't think this is about you or that your development, but
It's not personal.
I don't know, I don't know. I want, I don't think I want Commissioner Becker to beat up on me today. It's been a rough week so far. It's a really tough topic. No epiphanies from me at the podium on this one. It's, it's hard, if you're a numbers person, to understand how it's calculated. It's even harder to project what's going to happen in the future. So I really don't have an epiphany for you.
No, and again, you're right in saying, and Mayor's right in saying, it's not, it's not for you. It's, again, I think that we have enough data in terms of the development or the applications that come across in totality for us to glean some of that insight, to know what those numbers should be, at least directionally for us. So again, that's not a conversation for you.
Well, and with land uses and rezonings, just keep in mind, it's capacity, not concurrency, the school board doesn't look at them the same way, right? It's a completely different process when they get evaluated. So it is, it's tough, and I understand the dilemma.
Okay. All right. Anybody from the public which should speak on this matter?
When James hit earlier, mentioned seats, that's obviously the number of students coming in, right?
Correct.
Okay. The other question I have, and I don't know whether any city officials know the answer, when was the last time that the impact fees for schools were changed?
They're looking to them right now, and then now, they've got a, there's a state law that won't let them, they were going to increase them 40%, and the state legislature just passed a law that says you can only go up, I want to say, 25% per year? And then there's, I think there's a cap on top of that, isn't it?
Well, yeah, Stephen Hudak wrote a news article in the Orlando Sentinel, June 25th, about that. Covers that topic quite well.
Correct.
And it has really put school districts, localities in a tough position because it does cut back on the increases
Correct.
allowable for impact fees.
Correct.
But another point I want to bring up, I don't want to take up too much time, I've overstayed my welcome already, but I believe that the Florida Constitution is supposed to have language to the effect that students in Florida will, there's a guaranteed maximum academic environment for them. That's not quite the language. But the point is that there's supposed to be an assurance that there will be optimal learning environment in Florida. I think I'm correct about that. This worries me a lot. And under the rubric of full disclosure, I have a 44-year career as a teacher, public educator, also private school. I've taught both. So this is something that really concerns me a lot. And I do appreciate the attention being given this to, by the board. Excellent. You're trying so hard to do what is right, and so you're be commended for that. But this is no small issue, and it's our children that are, that stay here. A great education
At our age, David
To build a nation's strength, a great education is what
At our age, it's grandchildren.
It's all grandchildren for us.
All right. Anybody else want to speak on this matter? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and
Yeah, I mean, just one last comment. I mean, there's a whole bunch of first readings to it, and I get that.
Yeah, right.
But my, my, again, I'm one of five, but my expectation would just be, in order for me to feel confident on these second readings of these business items, that we need to have some level of data here to aid us.
So I'll get with Jim, and we'll get with OCPS and try to come up with a, with some data points and have somebody come down from Facilities, as well as ask School Board Member Bird as well, so, okay. All right. Looking for a motion to approve ordinance number 2838 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Okay, I'm going to second.
Second by Commissioner Velasquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2839.
Ordinance number 2839. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from county rural to mixed use for certain real property generally located on the southwest corner of Sadler Road and Golden Gem Road, owned by Carl C. and Donna S. Redder, comprising 8.62 acres, more or less, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Okay, Jean?
Again, Jean Sanchez with the Planning-Zoning Division. This is a request to approve the Redder-Golden Gem parcel ID ending in 085, future land use amendment from county rural to mixed use. Property is also located within the one-mile radius of State Road 429 and Kelly Park Road. Also sits on the southwest corner of Sadler Road and Golden Gem Road, east adjacent, I'm sorry, west adjacent of the property referenced in the previous item, and is approximately 8.62 acres in size. The KPI Form Based Code requires that this property is assigned a mixed-use future land use designation. Parcel will be allowed a minimum density of five dwelling units per acre and a maximum density of 10 dwelling units per acre, a minimum .5 floor area ratio, maximum .75. The zoning application will be forthcoming and subject to the standards of the KPI Form Based Code standards. DRC and Planning Commission recommend approval to change future land use from county rural to mixed use. The recommended motion is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2839 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on July 21st, 2021. Seven applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Jean? Okay. Anybody from the public which should speak on this matter?
If you say five to 10, you can speak.
Yes, sir.
Good, okay. Anybody who wish to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2839, first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker?
All right.
Second by Commissioner Velasquez.
Velasquez, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2841.
Ordinance number 2841. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from T Transitional District to Kelly Park Interchange District, mixed use, KPMU, and assigning a neighborhood overlay district for certain real property generally located east of State Road 429 and west of Plymouth-Sorrento Road, owned by Klepsig Family Trust, Klepsig Dennis R. Life Estate, and Klepsig Joanne Life Estate, comprising 50.79 acres, providing for directions to the Community Development Director, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Okay, Jean?
Again, Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to approve This is a request to approve the change of zoning. It's accompanying master plan for Plymouth-Sorrento Assemblage. The properties fall within the KPI Form-Based Code area, therefore subject to the KPI Form-Based Code standards. The, the project site is approximately 50.79 acres in size, situated east of State Road 429, west of Plymouth-Sorrento Road, and south of Joey McGuckin Road, approximately south-central of the terminus, of the KPI Form-Based Code area. The request is to approve the change of zoning of Plymouth-Sorrento Assemblage from T Transitional to KPI MU, Kelly Park Interchange, mixed use, with neighborhood overlay. Properties have recently adopted a future land use designation of mixed-use interchange on May 19, 2021, by ordinance number 2822. The master plan proposes the development of 179-lot, single-family residences with a mix of minimum lot widths of 34 feet, 40 feet, and 55 feet. Lots with 34 and 40 feet widths will have a minimum living area of 1,300 square feet and 1,500 square feet for lots with 55 feet width. There are no minimum or maximum living area standards and light-size requirements in the KPI Form-Based Code. The applicant is dedicating a 30-foot wide strip along Plymouth-Sorrento Road for future right-of-way widening and proposing a multipurpose trail along Plymouth-Sorrento and internal to the site. The plan also shows a connection to future development to the north to the proposed thoroughfare leading to Kelly Park Road. While 20% of the site is required to be open space, the plan proposes almost 12 acres of open space, which is approximately 23%. DRC and Planning Commission recommend approval of the rezoning and the master plan. The recommend, the recommended motion accept, is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2841 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on July 21, 2021. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Jean? Applicant, come forward. Okay, good. Okay.
This is 28.
Mr. Hoffman? How many homes per acre?
The density approved for, based on the future land use, is, uh, sorry. Maximum allowable is five dwelling units per acre, and they are proposing right now their density is three and a half dwelling units per acre.
You, there's a, there's a whole, let's give him the pack. I'll.
I'll give him my pack.
Okay. Anybody else from the public which should speak on this matter?
This is 28.
What's that? Okay. So on, on ordinance number 2841, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2841 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Good.
Next up, ordinance number 2843.
Ordinance number 2843. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from residential medium, commercial, and future land use in progress to, to mixed use for certain real property generally located off State Road 414, east of Martin Road, and west of Hawthorne Avenue, and owned by Emerson Point Phase II LLC, comprising 69.65 acres more or less, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Good afternoon. Allison Williams with the City's Planning Division. The applicant is requesting a change in future land use designation of the property from city residential medium, commercial, and future land use in progress, which permits a maximum density of 10 dwelling units per acre and 0.25 FAR to city mixed use, which permits a maximum density of 15 dwelling units per acre and 1.0 FAR. Subjected properties are located on the north side of State Road 414, east of Martin Road, and west of Hawthorne Avenue, and are approximately 69.65 acres in size, specifically at 1801 Martin Road, 1890, and 1900 South Hawthorne Avenue. The applicant is requesting a large-scale future land use amendment in order to develop the Martin Road Mixed Use Development, a residential subdivision, which is intended to consist of single-family residences, townhomes, and commercial. A request to assign a future land use designation of mixed use is compatible with the designations assigned to abutting properties to the southwest, which have a mixed-use future land use designation. They have zoning designations of residential multifamily, community, commercial, and transitional. However, the applicant is requesting a change in zoning, which will be forthcoming. OCPS has provided a report that indicates capacity for the proposed development is not available at the elementary school level and is deficient by 4.063 seats at the elementary school level. The property is zoned for Wheatley Elementary, Piedmont Lakes Middle, and Wakava High. DRC recommends approval, Planning Commission recommends approval, and the recommended motion is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2843 and authorize transmittal to Florida Department of Economic Opportunity. Staff and applicant are here to answer questions.
Any questions for Allison?
I have one. The three previous ordinances, the Planning Commission unanimously found it consistent, but for this one, it just says that the Planning Commission found it proposed amendment.
It was unanimous.
Oh, okay. I just, just wondering. The word unanimous was left out, so. Thank you.
No, but I mean, it's, we, we definitely need to have that because if there's a, if there's somebody voting against it, we won't know why they're.
Right. And so that's what I, that's what it indicated when I didn't see the word.
Sure.
And commercials still plan for this as part of the mixed use?
Yeah.
Okay. Applicant here? Like to speak?
Jimmy Palm with App and Engineering. Just happy to answer any questions you guys have.
So as far as the commercial, we're asking about the commercial piece?
Yeah, there's a small commercial piece that's going to be located towards Martin Road. It's going to have to be a separate site plan. It'll have to be submitted, separate from the PD.
Any other questions for the applicant? Anybody from the public which should speak on this matter?
Sure.
Roger Zbeka, 7 West Main Street. I think probably about two or three months ago, you guys approved the second phase of the apartment complex there.
On Benyon.
Yeah, and at that point, we kind of talked about lighting along that Martin Road area.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if it's been addressed or maybe looked into. I know she did a presentation where she kind of assessed certain areas of Apopka. But for the most part, the whole, the whole southeast portion of Apopka, you've got several new developments, but when you come to street lighting, there's really nothing along those locations. If you go from Martin Road, there's no lighting, other than the portion they exit off on the expressway. North and south of that section, there's really no, no street lighting. If you go Keene Road, there's no street lighting on Keene Road. If you go on, I guess, Acoia-Popka, there's no street lighting again there until you get to the, to the hospital, which they have it on site. Even if you take Harmon Road, Benon Road, there's no street lighting around these locations, but we have a lot of development going in these areas. So I just don't, I'm just wondering, is there a study that we're looking at to kind of look at this holistically as opposed to kind of spotting? So that's just a suggestion.
No, it's a good, good point. I know, Pam, come forward, because I know a lot of that's in the county, so it's, it's, you know, that's like, Apopka-Coe is, you know, we're trying to figure that one out, Apopka-Coe. But what about Martin and Benyon?
Martin is our road, and, you know, we just changed our land development code. So when developments come in now, they're required to install those lights.
Inside the neighborhood or?
Well, always inside the neighborhood, but along the road.
Right.
I don't remember exactly when we. Yeah, so some, some of.
Right. Right, but, but all the roads that he's talking about, the only ones that are county are?
Acoia-Popka and parts of Keene.
Okay.
So, I mean, we can, Martin is definitely on the list.
Right.
These people are the, the folks for this project, they'll be required to do lights in front of their property.
And those lights are standard, um, streetlights, not decorative lights that are like in their neighborhoods, but decorative ones that, as you, as you build out an entire street, all of that becomes uniform.
Right. They're all just the standard snakehead, kind of flat LED.
Well, Pam, before you go back, let me ask you a question. With the continued development, especially that affected Martin Road, is there any plan at putting in maybe turn lanes at Martin and Apopka-Coe Road?
Yes, sir. A signal. I'm working on an agreement right now with a developer on the west side of Acoia-Popka Road, where it intersects with Martin, to design and install that signal. That's like real-time. They're doing it now, as soon as we have the agreement. And they'll do that when they're building their project. They're going to blow that intersection out for the widening of Acoia-Popka Road, and that will include turn lanes on Martin Road as well.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's definitely more than on the books.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Okay. Anybody from the public which should speak on this matter? Now, I look to close the public hearing. Look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2843 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
Some.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Banksen. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2845.
Ordinance number 2845. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from Ag Agricultural District to Kelly Park Interchange District, mixed use, MUKPI, and assigning a Kelly Park Crossing Neighborhood Overlay District for certain real property located south of West Kelly Park Road and east of Round Lake Road, comprising 39.6 acres more or less, and owned by Kent A. Greer and Annie M. Greer, providing for directions to the Community Development Director, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Commissioners. Phil Martinez, Planner 2 with the City's Planning Division. The applicant is proposing a rezoning from agriculture to Kelly Park Interchange, mixed-use district with a neighborhood overlay, along with a master plan. The subject properties are highlighted in yellow, comprised of an estimated 39.6 acres. The surrounding area consists of residential and agricultural properties along with West Kelly Park Road to the north and Round Lake Road to the west. The properties are zoned agriculture district. And in accordance with the Kelly Park Interchange Form-Based Code, the applicant is requesting Kelly Park Interchange District zoning with a neighborhood overlay. The subject properties have mixed-use future land use, which is compatible with the proposed Kelly Park Interchange District zoning. The master plan for this rezoning shows 113 single-family lots with a minimum lot width of 55 feet and a proposed minimum, minimum living area of 1,600 square feet. Access to the site is proposed off of West Kelly Park Road, and there are four vehicular and pedestrian future access points proposed in this development. In addition, there are three future pedestrian connections that are proposed in this development, one located at the southwest here, and the other two being in the eastern area of this development. The applicant has provided 9.48 acres of open space, where 7.73 acres are required. This open space includes a park, walking trails, and a playground. The Development Review Committee and Planning Commission recommend approval of the proposed rezoning, master plan, and assignment of the neighborhood overlay. And the recommended motion for this afternoon is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2845 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on July 21st, 2020. This concludes my presentation, and the applicant and I would be happy to address any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Phil?
Just one. On the future right-of-way connection, two of them are what appear to be kind of like cul-de-sac kind of things over on the left-hand side. The stopouts here. Will there be signage? Because, you know, obviously, if people buy in there, they're going to look at it as a cul-de-sac. It's kind of like, it's not intuitive that that's a future connection point elsewhere. Will there be signage? How will that otherwise be designated? That's a great question, Commissioner Becker. I'd like to.
Where's the applicant?
Defer that, yeah.
Yeah, we've had, had a couple of issues where it was always intended to be a thoroughfare, and they bought on the end of what they thought was a cul-de-sac, and, and so we came back and had to, to break the bad news to them. So we just need to make sure that those, the homeowners or the people who buy those lots on the end of the cul-de-sac that we've got.
Yeah, so currently, we don't show any signage, but I think that's something that's reasonable to add, a, a small sign. It says future right-of-way, something like that.
I would almost add a little something if we could, those last couple of lots, you know, maybe on the. So the one. So you got two of them.
Lot number 70.
Yeah, man, you better, I was a better than mine. Yeah, I'd probably go two lots on that one. So they ought to have it in, when, when you go to sell those lots, that they, it's on the deed.
Okay. So what we can do, one thing that I know that would be fairly easy is, this one here. So right here, what we typically do on these is we'll add the, the kind of diamond-shaped reflectors to the end of the road to indicate the end of the road. Above that, we can add a sign that says, you know, future right-of-way connection.
Yeah, the problem is if the sign goes away in, you know, in two years from now, and, or a year from now, I'd like to have that in the, the documents that, so those, the two lots, as Commissioner.
69 and 70.
69, 70, and then two.
64, 65.
Yeah, no, but.
62, 63.
Yeah.
63, 62, 60. When you open up that face to sell those lots, that they realize that that's not a cul-de-sac.
So we just need to make sure they're.
Only because
Michael, can you?
Once you're gone from there, what happens is, they start to come here as soon as you start to build a new development next to them, to say that they don't want the connected, connectivity.
Michael, could you get with the developer about something that would?
Looked at, or we can have it as being, well, this is just a rezoning.
Okay. We'll see him again.
At site plan.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then we can have that, we can have that as a condition of approval, that the lot, that those lots have a declaration that they are not on a, that they are on a through right-of-way.
Okay. Okay. All right, super. Okay, any other questions for the applicant?
No.
I, I want to say something positive today. I feel like I've been Debbie Downer this whole time. But I do, I do like the plan, the concept of having the, the, the trailways and, and walking paths within the, within the community. I think that's, that's nice.
I just wish we could have more prop, bigger properties where you could do more things like that. That's the, you know, when you got a four or five-acre piece, it's hard to do a lot with it. But, you know, you got enough there to, that you can really do something nice with it. Okay, anybody from the public which should speak on this matter? How many homes per acre?
What's proposed in the neighborhood overlay is a maximum of five dwelling units per acre, and the applicant is proposing 2.85 dwelling units per acre. Yes, sir. Yeah.
Just want to say one more thing, too. I thought that last year, there was an agreement by the city. I think Mayor Nelson, I believe you made a phone call to my home, which I appreciate. I suggested at one point that with the agenda and these metrics that are presented for each ordinance, that homes per acre would be included. Am I right? Or is that for the second reading? Now, this is a first reading for these, most of these, but wasn't it agreed that there would be homes per acre?
You're right. It's, yeah, it's, it's in the staff report, but, but you wanted on the, so, yeah, we, yeah, you're right. Thank you. So Jim, we're going to make note of that. Just, we just put it in, yep. Okay. All right. That closed the public hearing. Look for a motion to approve ordinance number.
2845.
2845, first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner.
Second.
Banksen. Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2848.
Ordinance number 2848. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida Statute 171.044 the here-and-after-described lands situated and being in Orange County, Florida, owned by Bert E. Roper and Barbara C. Roper, Family Limited Liability Limited Partnership. Family Limited Liability Limited Partnership, located west of State Road 429 and north of Hooper Farms Road, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Okay, Jean?
Again, Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. Their request to accept is to accept ordinance number 2848, the annexation of a parcel owned by the Roper family. Subject property is located west of State Road 429 and north of Hooper Farms Road. It is approximately 1.53 acres and meets Florida Statute 171. The recommended motion is to accept ordinance 2848 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on July 21st, 2021. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Jean?
With the size of that track, how many dwelling units per acre is going to be on that one?
I can't answer that, sir. There's no future land use.
Get creative with that land.
All right. Anybody from public which should speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing. Look for a motion to approve, let's see, ordinance number 2848 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption. Got a motion by Commissioner Becker. Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2849.
Ordinance number 2849. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning for residential multifamily, RMF, community commercial, CC, and transitional T to Plan Development PD for certain real property located at 1801 Martin Road, 1890, and 1900 South Hawthorne Avenue, comprising 69.65 acres, more or less, and owned by Emerson Point Phase 2 LLC, providing for directions to the Community Development Director, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Allison?
Allison Williams, Planner with the city's Planning Division. The applicant is requesting a rezoning of the property from transitional, community commercial, and residential multifamily to Plan Development. Subject property is located at 1801 Martin Road, 1890, and 1900 Hawthorne Avenue, and is approximately 69.65 acres in size. The applicant is requesting a rezoning of the property to PD instead of a conventional zoning district to allow protection of natural environmental features of the property, including wetlands, floodplain conservation, and carst areas that a conventional zoning district development criteria on the property would make harder to achieve. The applicant is requesting a change in the future land use designation of the property from city residential medium, commercial, and future land use in progress to mixed use. The PD master plan proposes a residential subdivision consisting of 225 lots with a maximum allowable density of 15 dwelling units per acre. The developer is also proposing 1.5 acres of the site to be a commercial out parcel located on the western perimeter near the access point on Martin Road. The lots range in size from 2,640 square feet in area to 7,800 square feet in area. 34 lots are 55 feet in width. 25 lots are 60 feet in width. 38 lots are 65 feet in width. And 128 lots are 22 feet in width. The 65-foot-wide lots are proposed along the northern perimeter of the subdivision to buffer the interior of the site where the 22-foot-wide lots are proposed. Access to the site is proposed to be a full access located on Martin Road. Open space, wetlands, stormwater ponds, and internal streets will be in tracts that are owned and maintained by the Homeowners Association. Of the 69.65 acres, 26.25 acres are reserved for open space. 8.71 acres are reserved for recreation amenities, including a swimming pool, a cabana, playground, swings, and a rock climbing wall. 10 pocket parks with a combined total of 1.63 acres are also included in the amenity tract. A six-foot wall, a six-foot-tall wall will be provided between the commercial out parcel and Lot 225 to provide buffering between residential and commercial use. DRC recommends approval. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval. And the recommended motion is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2849 and hold it over for second reading and adoption at a future date. Staff and the applicant are here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Allison?
Just general comment. On this one especially, we're going to have, I mean, the conversations around what Martin looks like going north from here are going to be pretty urgent, right? Because I would assume that most of the flow of that traffic is going to go north.
Pam, why don't you go?
I'm going to defer to Transportation Coordinator.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Becker. I was talking about lights to Jim. Would you ask?
Speak, speak up.
Oh, no, I was just, I was just saying the urgency of, you know, putting something like this online where you've got, I don't know how many homes that we just described, but I would, I would...
225.
I would venture to guess that a lot of that traffic is going to go northbound on Martin to Acoia-Papka. So the urgency of improvements to that roadway system. I just wanted to align priorities from you that we have some level of comfort that that's a priority of yours.
I sent over to Orange County last Friday an agreement where we both stated who's responsible for what so we can get started. I sent over the draft scope to do the study to determine exactly what and where we need to do it. And then I just talked about the Martin Road improvement. There's capacity on, or the Martin Road signal. There's capacity on Martin Road and there technically is capacity on Acoia-Papka Road, but it needs to get updated. And it's on the top of my list, probably even above streetlights.
Yeah, because on that roadway, if memory serves, I mean, the shoulders are pretty nonexistent, right? So even free flow, absent any other improvement, the shoulders and just the structural integrity of that road needs to be addressed.
On Martin?
Martin.
Martin's okay until you get to the intersection at Acoia-Papka Road. And that's why we're going to separate it into right and left turn lanes. I don't think we asked anyone to do that since we know that the signal's coming within, say, the next year to two years.
Good, okay. Any other questions for Pam or Allison? Hey, is the applicant here? Want to speak? Good, okay. All right, anybody from public which should speak on this matter?
I guess just for clarification, when she says capacity of the roadways, you're saying as far as the design?
As far as number of cars.
Or just as far as the number of traffic cars? Okay.
Yeah. Okay, all right. That closed the public hearing. Look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2849 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith? Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
All right, all right.
Commissioner, got a second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
All opposed?
I'm in agreement. I just, you know, just an additional comment. You know, when we do the second reading, because, you know, this is a stretch two where we had those issues with trucks parking on the side of the road and all that sort of thing. I just want to make sure that all of that is buttoned up when all this volume starts getting on this roadway. Because, again, the shoulder condition and the way that it is, when you get all that volume going, it's going to slowly erode that if we don't do any improvements on it. So I just, you know, I'm beating a dead horse here, but I just want to make sure that we're...
I got you. We went out and put no parking signs, all up Martin Road on the north side.
Okay.
And if we need to put them on the south side, we also put them on Acoia-Papka Road. So I'm hoping that that, I haven't gotten any calls since we put the signs up.
Are they still parking the trucks?
I don't think so.
Okay.
We put them close enough together where it would make it a challenge.
I make a random check. They haven't been parked.
They haven't?
Oh, okay, good.
Signs are working.
Okay.
But, you know, at some point, that's one of those things somebody needs to address. I mean, I don't know if it's the city of Apopka, but, you know, there's so many of these, you know, long-haul drivers and they come home for the weekend. There's nowhere for them to park. They can't park in their residential neighborhood. And yet there's where do they park? And it's, it's a, you know, it's one of those...
Well, I think we need to do some kind of joint project between the city and the county to come what, somewhere for them to park.
Okay. Now, next up, ordinance number 2850.
Ordinance number 2850. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the city of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from county rural to mixed use for certain real property generally located on the southwest corner of Sadler Road and Golden Gem Road, owned by PMDW Ventures, comprised, comprising six, or 9.86 acres, more or less, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Jean?
For the record, Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to approve the PMDW Ventures future land use amendment from county rural to mixed use. The property is located within the one-mile radius of State Road 429 and Kelly Park Road. It is situated on the southwest corner of Sadler Road and Golden Gem Road, approximately 9.8 acres in size. Because properties within the KPI Form-Based Code area mixed use future land use designation is required before it is developed. The rezoning application will be reviewed based on the requirements of the KPI Form-Based Code, and it will be forthcoming. The DRC and Planning Commission recommend approval to amend the future land use. And the recommended motion is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2850 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on July 21st, 2021. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Jean? Anybody from public which should speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2850 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Order number 2852.
Ordinance number 2852. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida Statute 171.044 the here-and-after-described lands situated in being in Orange County, Florida, owned by the city of Apopka, located west of Hawthorne Avenue and south of Acoia-Papka Road, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Allison?
Allison Williams, Planner with the city's Planning Division. Their request is to annex 8.52-acre parcel into the city of Apopka. The subject property is located at 1,002 South Hawthorne Avenue. The subject property is contiguous to the city limits and is eligible for annexation pursuant to Florida Statute 171. The proposed property is a retention pond. DRC recommends approval. Staff recommends approval. And myself and the applicant are here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Allison?
Yes. Which piece of property is contiguous to this pond?
It's, you can't see it from this, but all the properties to the south are in the city of Apopka.
Okay.
On the, on the one to the right, you can see it, yeah. It's contiguous.
So retention.
We, we own it. We own the parcel. It's just in Orange County.
All right.
Good, okay. Anybody from the public which should speak on this matter? Not, close the public hearing. Look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2852 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Ordinance number 2858. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from RSF 1A residential single-family estate, CC community commercial, and MUESGT mixed-use eastshore gateway District 2PD Plan Development for certain real property generally located north and south of Boy Scout Road, west of State Road 440, 451, and east of Binion Road, owned by Troy S. Bronson Family LP, John and Donna Marie Kirkland, Binion Partners LLC, and Apopka Center Line Development LLC, comprising 366.6 acres, providing for directions to the Community Development Director, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Okay, Jean?
Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to approve the change of zoning for the ridge and its accompanying master plan. The ridge is a consolidation of 14 parcels totaling approximately 366 acres located north and south of Boy Scout Road, west of State Road 451, north of State Road 414, and west of State Road 429. Their request is to rezone the project properties from RSF 1A CC MUESGT to Plan Development. Parcels have a future land use designation of mixed use. The ridge master plan proposes commercial uses on Parcel 1, which is right here. Portions of Parcel 3, which is just south of that. Six, which is on the west. And Parcel 7, which comprises of about 46.7 acres of the total area. These are all supposed to have commercial uses. Based on the PD master plan, the applicant proposes a Spine Road, Street A, as a parallel facility to Boy Scout Road leading to Binion Road via the proposed Street B. I'm sorry. Street B. Parcel 2 is intended to include 340 units of single-family detached and townhomes on 79.2 acres. This is Parcel 2 on the north. While Parcel 3 is intended for 300 multifamily units on 16.2 acres, office uses on 10 acres and commercial uses on 6.3 acres. Single-family residential detached units and townhomes are anticipated to be on Parcel 4, comprising 58.3 acres of the development shown to have access points along Street A and B. Street B, Street A. Additionally, a boulevard will provide a north-south connection within the PD, connecting Parcel 2 and 4. 18-foot-wide lots with rear, are rear-loaded homes with at least 1,800 square feet of living area and are supposed to be located on Parcels 2 and 4. All proposed townhomes and single-family detached units that are less than 50 feet wide are required to be rear-loaded and have alley access. Parcel 5 will accommodate industrial uses on the south, containing about 78.2 acres. And Parcel 7 has access on Binion Road and will permit commercial uses and cell tower use on 2.8 acres. This parcel. Parcel 8 is centrally located and reserved for open space and amenity. This is Parcel 8. A 12-foot-wide pedestrian bike trail is required along Acoia-Papka Road and Binion Road. An 8-foot-wide trail meandering through the north and south portions will be, will be provided on the development. The internal trail will be embellished with benches and connects Boy Scout Road and Acoia-Papka Road. Also, picnic areas, open-air pavilion, community garden, playground area, dog park, and a dock with viewing and fishing pier will be part of the development amenity package. The applicant has worked with staff to design the site to locate each type of use pragmatically and ensure its compatibility with existing adjacent uses, leaving large spaces for open area, recreation, park amenities, and the pedestrian bicycle trail. The DRC and Planning Commission recommend approval of the ridge rezoning and PD master plan. The recommended motion is to accept The recommended motion is to accept the first reading of ordinance 2858 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on July 21, 2021. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Why don't you bring the applicant on up, just because it's a big project.
Oh, it's a huge project.
And then, one of the questions I've got for Pam is, I know one of the fixes is that we're going to get the Boy Scout, Popka, Okoya Road, that intersection fixed.
I have another meeting coming up with Expressway, and so I've talked to these guys about it. They're, we're talking about adding ramps to and from the north to the 429 at Boy Scout Road. Unfortunately, we can't line it up exactly with Boy Scout Road because there is a residential community being, it's under construction now, and that would take us out of the price range. But we've all talked about, maybe when, where the ramps will come off, it'll be just south of Boy Scout Road, and we'll do, we'll either realign somewhere on the east side of Boy Scout Road to join back in and cul-de-sac the existing Boy Scout Road, making sure that everyone still keeps access, or some other way that complements their plan. Since they do have a large industrial component, of course, they would look forward to ramps going to a toll road. So that's why the roadway network that you see on there is probably going to change. But they are still going to have connections to Binion.
But, you know, if we can get CFX to add this, you know, ramp, these ramps, on and off ramps, it'll take some pressure off all those roads around there, so it'll, it should help.
They're, they're serious about it. They had their consultant call me last week, and we had about an hour-long discussion about everything that's going on in the area. They have to justify it, and I think I gave them enough evidence to justify that. And we're going to have another conversation probably tomorrow to talk about the whole right-of-way issue and properties that they'll go through. Anyway, we're moving forward, but they move really slow. But I'm hoping to get a commitment at some time during this project's development.
Now, that, that wouldn't have any conflict with the, would have a Parkway rules. I know, like, when Mount Plymouth, they were exploring, trying to add ramps there, that wouldn't be in violation of that.
No, it's, it's, it's north of Ponkin Road is where that, yeah.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioner's Tom Sullivan with the Gray Robinson Law Firm on behalf of the developer. Just wanted to come up, as you said, mayor's a large project. We've worked very closely with staff on this. I know the council's also familiar with the project a little bit, and just available for any questions that you all might have. We'll, we'll be back a few more times as we go through the circuits.
Any questions? Any questions? Wait, 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 wait a minute. Let's get, any questions for the applicant first before we bring her up? Any questions for Tom?
No, I mean, it's more at staff level again, because I keep on going back to Pam, right? Because we had the presentation, I don't know, several months ago as it related to these, these roadways, right? And this was well before we knew kind of the particulars around all these developments that were actually coming. So it might be worth dusting that off one more time, just to refamiliarize ourselves with what are the improvements that we anticipate making, the timing of them, and all the dependencies, obviously, with other organ, other governmental organizations that we might be working with. One, one insight, too, that I got from a resident that's in Breckenridge is apparently the placement of where their gate is causes backup onto that roadway system on a regular basis. And, you know, obviously, whatever we do here is going to compound that, that issue. So I'm, you know, I'm not sure what can be done about it, but that's just a, a point of concern that I've heard from some Breckenridge residents.
We can fix that.
Now, you don't have to answer it today, I'm just saying that that's a concern, and it's a valid one, because it causes backup onto that roadway.
And I acknowledge that, and, and they, they'll have to address that.
Who's, who's they?
Oh, the applicant, I'm sorry, I keep pointing.
Okay.
At them, at the applicant, and, and they know that. They have a lot of things that they have to address.
Okay.
The intersection of Boy Scout and Okoya-Popka Road, there are some elevation issues there, you know, that trucks get stuck, literally stuck. So we're going to fix that. There are going to be improvements, probably, either the spine road or Boy Scout Road, however it ends up over there on Binion. They're doing a parallel facility, so we don't need to widen Boy Scout Road. Now, Okoya-Popka Road, that's another whole thing. Orange County wants to widen it, so in addition to their impact fees, there's going to be some amount of proportionate share. They're talking about using their impact fees, and I think they're doing a CDD, did I call it right? A CDD to help pay for it. Signal at Boy Scout that they've committed to on, at Okoya-Popka Road. I'm working out the details with Orange County right now. There are some stormwater problems out there that exist, not actually some, but millions of dollars' worth of stormwater prob, issues. And the agreement that I sent to Orange County commits them to take on the responsibility of fixing all the stormwater as part of this project. And that goes all the way from either Bradshaw or Hawthorne, south to either Keene or Binion. But we've kind of got it broken into two pieces because something, the developers to the south are kind of handling the piece south of the hospital. So for them, they're going to start with doing a, like, a preliminary engineering study that's going to tell us where we need to widen, where we need right-of-way, where the ponds need to be, all the general engineering aspects of it, and then we can compile the, the price. Orange County is definitely our partner, and it's not just them. In this, in this area, I just updated the map, and I should have brought it today, there are now 30 developments somewhere in our development review process in the area, and they are all contributing to the improvements that are needed, primarily along Okoya-Popka Road. I, Binion, both roads, Binion and Okoya-Popka Road are the counties, and we can't fix everything for the county, but we're going to fix as much as we can. I, we haven't really discussed yet the future of Binion. The traffic on it is not nearly as much of a problem as it is on Okoya-Popka Road. For now, we're trying to get the speed limit reduced because, you know, in preparation for what's coming, people don't need to be driving 55 miles an hour out there on the, on the road. But as far as access connection, maybe at some point, we're going to look at a signal at Harmon and Binion as well. So for right now, the improvements to Okoya-Popka Road planned, and for all intents and purposes, pretty close to being funded, are signals at Martin Road, Boy Scout Road, Harmon Road, and Keene Road. Three of those are being done by developers as part of their developers' agreements, and then Harmon Road, the city's doing. We're going to Harmon Road signal and construction for the connection piece. I hope to get that advertised in October of this year. So we should be breaking ground on that in January of next year. Orange County thinks that the final solution for Okoya-Popka Road, we're talking about a five- or six-year project, which sounds about right. If we have to get right-of-way, that takes time. If we, you know, design, it's going to be, it's going to be a big project, and then construction will probably take a couple of years. So it, it doesn't meet my hopes and expectations, but, you know, I want it done tomorrow, and I can't do that right now. But we have committed all the impact fee money in the area to go and to fix, the money needs to stay in this area and fix the problems in this area, and I think that the transportation impact fees will, will do that, along with the developer contributions.
Okay, thank you, Pam. Okay. Anyone want to come forward?
Hi, I'm Bobby Boy. Route 2317, Boy Scout Road. There is, I don't know how much this is going to impact us because that piece of property y'all cleared, or somebody cleared, on the west side of Binion, going from Boy Scout Road north, has cut off our water, so, water exit from the properties, and that culvert that goes under Binion, I think it's a 30-inch culvert, then they put a little retention pond over there that has no ingress, no egress, and our water doesn't go down to Lake Apopka anymore. So I don't know how Bronson's place is going to be impacted, or they're going to help that because down there at 2405, where there is one grate at the street at Mark Cromer's, that floods every time, because that drain does not grow, go north to the flood area. And then the drain at 2405 goes down to where it was flooded. It has now finally evaporated out or percolated through that area. He's done some help clearing and, and things, but we, we had no problem with the flooding before all this stuff was going on, between the one neighbor filling in his flood zone and then that property that's on the west side of Binion. And I, I never even heard that one was even coming up. It's, what, 70 acres or something? And I didn't know who was doing it, who handled that, or just somehow missed the announcement on that.
Well, ma'am, if you would mind, Glad, can you get with her offline just to at least get the details on the pond, and we'll, we'll have some, we'll have, he's our engineer, have him take a look, or at least get you some ideas on, if there's a fix.
Okay.
Okay?
And Pam, I was going to get, you were going to send me a?
I did, except for I wrote your email to them.
Okay, we can fix that. All right. That's basically it.
Yeah, pamrichman@popka.net, why don't you send her one, and then, then she can't mess it up.
All right. Yeah, anyway, that's, we're having that. And I've been with Grantham, Lucas Grantham, he's been out there. He couldn't find the drain in the back. I said, yeah, it's underwater. Is it, you just walk and find it now, I guess you can, but, you know, first, anyway.
Okay. Yeah, so if you just get Vlad's information, then he'll, okay. Anybody else from the public wish to speak on this matter?
Just give me her address.
Not, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2858 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2860, Michael Rodriguez.
Okay. Ordinance 2860. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Apopka by amending Chapter 38, Environment, Article 2, Nuisance Abatement, Division 5, Registration, Maintenance, and Security of Abandoned Real Property, Providing for Codification, Providing for Severability, Providing for Conflicts, and Setting an Effective Date.
Good afternoon. Ordinance 2860 seeks to update our current property registration ordinance, which only applies to abandoned properties. The update will apply, will now apply for the registration of properties that are subject to foreclosure actions. This will bring us in line with all of the surrounding municipalities that have similar property registration ordinances. The other significant change to the current ordinance is that our registration of these properties is going to be on a semi-annual basis, which means there'll be two registrations per year. Aside from that, most of the other elements of our current property registration ordinance remains the same, it's just the change from it only applying to abandoned properties to those properties that are subject to a foreclosure. Most of these property registr, most of these registration fees are actually paid by the mortgage servicers as an incentive to continue to maintain the property while it's in the penancy of its foreclosure action. If you have any other questions, I'm right here.
Any questions for Michael? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2860 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Velasquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Resolution 2021-31. Budget adjustment.
Resolution 2021-31. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2020, and ending September 30, 2021, providing for a budget amendment.
Gladimir Ortega, Finance Director. The first budget resolution, 2021-31, it's, this budget amendment includes changes in funding and appropriations related to a contract award for a facility needs assessment for a new public safety building. The total contract cost is $92,570, with a 10% contingency amount of $9,257 for a total contract rounded to $101,830. The budget for this contract was provided in the Police Department Impact Fee Fund and the Fire Department Impact Fee Fund, $30,000 budgeted under each fund for a total of $60,000. This amendment increases fund from reserves equally to both impact fee funds to cover the cost of the contract, which totaled $41,830 divided between the two funds, for each fund to be impacted by $20,0915, and the total will be $101,830. The Second Amendment is an amendment that includes changes in funding and appropriations related to the governmental consulting services with Gray Robinson PA, that on June 16, 2021, the City Council approved an engagement to provide services related to the American Rescue Plan Act. The fees included $3,000 per month for state services and $3,000 per month for federal services for a period of not less than three months, beginning on July 1, 2021. This amendment provides funding from reserves in the amount of $18,000 to cover the period from July 2021 through September 2021. And I'm here to answer any additional questions.
Any questions for Gladimir? Anybody from the public wish to speak on these matters? Not, look for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2021-31.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Velasquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, City Council reports. Commissioner Becker, you want to start us out?
I'm good.
Good. Commissioner Smith?
I'd just like to commend the city and Parks and Recreation on the fantastic job done on the July 4 event at the Northwood Rec. Everything was well-planned and attendance was outstanding. So you're commended for a job well done. I would like to say that the city needs to take a look at addressing the needs for workforce housing in our city, and also rental assistance, as the moratorium is lifted on July 31st, we're going to have a lot of individuals that's going to end up being the homeless population. So we need to take a look at what we can do about getting some assistance in rental assistance, and also working with developers and coming up with some workforce housing for our community. And then, lastly, I just want to announce again that I will be hosting a house-buying seminar on July 31st. It's a Saturday beginning at 9:30 that morning. We're going to take approximately 30 individuals interested in purchasing homes here in the City of Apopka on a tour of four of our DuHoming developments, and giving them a tour of our Hilton Garden Inn as well, to let them know we have places to stay and also places we can host family reunions as well.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? You're going to have on July 31st?
July 31st, beginning 9:30, we're going to do a house-buying workshop for individuals interested in purchasing new homes in the City of Apopka.
Oh, okay, that's interesting.
Where is that located? His church? Commissioner Banksen?
Yeah, been a long day. I just want to bring up again the issue about falling trees, and I'm not sure, you know, I've tried to pursue that, and, and the challenge of, is it city, is it county? But if it's on, on the resident's lot, it's not fallen yet, but there's danger of that, how, how do we address that?
Commissioner, we can put that through code enforcement. So if you've got those, if you have some addresses where you have those issues, or we can share those with code enforcement, and they can, that's an issue that they can address, because that's, that's the authority that we can use if you think there's a tree that's, that is of that nature, and.
Yeah, because the one that fell this last week was between 15, 18 inches across. It was, it would have, it could kill somebody if it actually landed on him. So what is it that they can do? Do they just simply notify them, you need to look at it? Because I know in the past, we'd had this issue, and I think it was still in the county at that point, and they basically said, we really can't force them, we can just let them know, you really need to do something about this.
Right. That's what we've done, and I think on, on Sandpiper is one of them you're probably talking about that we had before, and it was in the county, we had to go to the county, and the county had to do it through code enforcement. What we prefer to do is what we've tried to do in some of ours, is meet with our residents and kind of, you know, share with them first before we try to go to the code enforcement, that, you know, that you have a tree that's in bad shape, that could fall, you know, on the sidewalk or whatever, and try to work with them before we have to go to code enforcement. So if you have some locations, we'll reach out to them first and try that as step one, and then, like I said, we can use code enforcement if we think that there's a, an issue that could be a, a public safety issue.
I know years ago, we, I actually had a police, policeman approach us about a tree that we had that really had that really wasn't aware of it, not being a tree expert, and he said, you know, based on these things, you really ought to look into that. And when we did, we found out, yeah, it could have been a real hazard. So I guess at that point, we don't really have someone who can go around and look at those. But if, I mean, I can point out ones if I notice them, but I'm just concerned at that being an issue that I, this actually happened, someone that I know, literally, it barely missed as he was driving by on a motorcycle, a tree barely missed him.
I know. We've got a few that we're looking at, that our staff's looking at, and we have an arborist that we have that is maintaining our tree, our palm trees, and they're looking at a couple that we have that are in the right-of-ways, that we want to make sure the arborist looks at them before we take them down, you know, see if we can even take them down. So, but if you have some like that, we'll be, you know, let me know, send me those, and we'll try to meet. I try to, I like to meet with the property owner first, or the citizen, and give them a chance to tell them, you know, maybe take a look at your tree and figure out what you can do as step one, and then if we have to, you know, go a little further than that, sometimes we have, but we like to work it out with them.
And I don't know if there is any type of an assistance program for something like that in case there's someone who really, it's not cheap necessarily to do.
I know. I don't think there is much. I've never seen anything like that, but, you know, it's something we can look into. If you'll send me that list, those names, we'll work with them.
All right. Thanks.
Okay. Diane?
Well, I'm just kind of, what, July 4 was a success. I really did commend the recreation staff. I mean, we did a great, you did a great job. We had a lot of fun. On that note, you know, we did very well. I did express to you that some of the visitors had said, oh, next time, do you think you can just turn the fountain off while we're doing the fireworks? Because they felt the fire, the fountain was distracting. But other than that, everyone really enjoyed it, and I know that as the residents and the people went by, they were like, thank you, Apopka, for doing this, because it was like the first celebration for a lot of families to come to the park to celebrate the Fourth of July. The other thing, I just, you know, I spoke to Ed Bass yesterday. Did we get any information on the building on Park Avenue by the nursery, where all the paper that's around the building is just flapping all over the place? It looks terrible.
Commissioner, I did reach out to Steve Brigg in code enforcement. He's going to go by there and talk with them a little more, and then he's going to get with Michael to see if there's any, anything else we can do at this stage.
I mean, this has been years.
Right. No, I agree. I agree with you. So he's going to kind of see what we can do to maybe kind of expedite it.
We've rung up over $300,000 in code enforcement violations.
Yeah, so the thing was, I said, at what point do we say, okay, this is enough? They lose the building, we take it over, and we do what we need to do.
Right. At that point, I'm trying to think, I'm trying to remember if this was one of the properties...
It's in the, it's in your hopper.
It was in the list. I was trying to recall, because of the review, the properties are reviewed. The issue, though, is if the property is subject to a mortgage, then our code enforcement lien is actually in second position. So if we do elect to foreclose, we foreclose, and we end up with the mortgage on the property.
So we can't, yeah, we're...
What is the mortgage on that property?
I don't know what the mortgage amount is, but it's, would not advise the city to go undertake a foreclosure and end up with a property with a mortgage that we're going to be responsible for.
Oh, can you find out what the mortgage is? I mean, so if we're going to keep looking at this building, I mean, I've been seeing this building for years. I'm not talking five years, I'm talking probably about 10 years already seeing this building. It's not finished. It always has those, the paper that surrounds it, and now it's flapping all over the place.
The issue then becomes whether it reaches a standard that the building official can deem as an unsafe structure, which would then, could then be subject to demolition. We would need to get a determination from the building official if the property's in that state.
Can we do that?
At that point, if there is a determination that the building is unsafe, the city will, does have the authority to go in and demolish the property, and then the costs of the demolition are a lien that are placed upon the property.
Okay. Would you look into that?
We can look into that.
It just makes Park Avenue look really bad, and, I mean, we have hundreds and hundreds of people that drive past it, and that's, I'll tell you the truth, every day I'll get somebody, what is the city doing with that building? What is the city doing with that building? And we seem to have the same answer all the time. So just do something, I guess, with it. And then I just want to kind of commend, you know, this past June, we had our Juneteenth, a federal holiday, and on a nice note, we had a lot of the residents really happy that we are recognizing this as a federal holiday. And I know that this year it got signed really late into the day, so we really didn't do any celebration or recognition of the date, but hopefully next year, we can prepare and have something for that date, Juneteenth. So that's June 19, and a lot of our residents were really happy that the state had passed it as a federal holiday to recognize our African-American community, and actually everyone, just as we do with all the other holidays. Thank you.
All right. Next up, Michael?
Nothing new to report. Just as an aside, I hope to, since the topic came up on the periphery of two items regarding the new bills, I hope to, for the next council meeting, I'll have an update and a summary of all the bills that have been signed into law and their effect on the city. Early in the legislative session, I gave you a copy of, and made a report of those bills that were currently being submitted to the legislature. At this point, it'll be an update with the summaries of those that have actually been signed into law.
Edward?
So your financial update, sales tax, so.
I saw that piece of paper somewhere. Here it is.
So you can see, if you look at the form that you have in front of you, you can see that this, for this month, revenues were about 870, a little over $871,000. If you look back at last year, it was only $369,000. So it's 136% increase. Again, that's because COVID was, this was one of our, that was our worst-hit month last year. So you can see that it's up about 136% over that year. Something interesting, I went back and looked at fiscal year 19, and it's still down, even today, it's still down from fiscal year 19 by 5.6% for that month. So that's kind of a good thing to keep in mind, that we're still not back to FY19 number yet, but you can see that it has recovered here a little bit from the previous year, which is pretty good. And then you can see the overall variance is still about 700, approximately $711,000, or 7% less than what we anticipate or what we were told that that number might be when the state gave us their estimates. So I think it's important to keep watching that, like we've been doing each month. The other thing is, I think that's important as we go through this, as we get ready to start the budget workshops, is that keep in mind, we talked today about the CAFRA, and we talked about the reserve levels. Keep in mind that we balanced the FY21 budget using $900,000 of those reserves, if you recall. So, you know, it'll all depend on how we come in, how we finish this year out. So you've got 900 that we borrowed for there to do FY21, and then you also have this $700,000 gap that we're kind of watching and monitoring that changes the number. So, but, you know, I want to just keep that in mind as we move through, because, you know, we're sitting at that 30, I think it's really 31.7%, right at 32%, but you've got some carry-forward numbers, you've got these numbers that we're still working through. So that number, you know, can fluctuate a little bit, but it's good to be where you are, I think, right now because of these things that are happening, to see where that number really falls out as we get to budget time. But again, it does give you, give you some room, too, to do those budget things, those additional projects and additional things in the budget this coming fiscal year. So I think that's good. And the only other thing I wanted to do is I wanted to mention that the budget workshops are for, again, July 19, July 19, 20, and 21. They start at 5 o'clock, the workshops, here in the council chambers. And then again, on Wednesday, after the seven o'clock council meeting will be our regular council meeting, that's when you'll set the proposed millage rate. So, anyway, I wanted to make sure that you had that information as well. So with that, I think that's all I've got.
All right. Any questions for Edward? All right. All right. Mayor's report, Parks and Springs Ridge update. I know, Michael, are you still talking with Kurt Arteman? I don't know where...
I have not received any information from Kurt Arteman. If you want to just...
Yeah. So anyway, we're, maybe we're talking, maybe we aren't, but it's not for lack of us being accessible, so no real update there. Vaccinations, I know Chief Wileman reached out to DOH, and we got a mobile vaccinator coming to Billy Dean's Community Center on July 23 from 2:30 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. So if anybody's looking for vaccination, it's July 23 from 2:30 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Billy Dean Community Center.
Do you know which vaccine that's coming?
I, do we know which one it is?
They're trying to hit Johnson and Johnson, but they're not on the schedule, so they don't have a chance.
So don't know yet.
Okay.
We got our first, Camp Weewa, got our first contract back from them. There's a couple of things there we need to get cleaned up. Hopefully, I think the staff at the Y are meeting tomorrow, so try to iron out the details there. Fourth of July recap, great job from Parks and Rec, but I also want to reach out, let, you know, the Police Department did a great job getting people in and out. Steve Harmon took control of the parking and did a marvelous job. We even had help from school board member Melissa Byrd opened up her campus, so we had parking there. Obviously, Wileman and his team did a great job, you know, making sure people were safe and all that. So it was not only just Parks and Rec, but just it was an all-around team effort, did a great job. So I guess we estimated 7,000, something like that, you know, kind of based on parking and all that. So great crowd.
And we can all thank God for nice weather.
Yeah, it was, it rained a little bit about 5, like, ah, you know, and they kind of pushed through, and, you know, by the time the concert started, it's great, and fireworks were perfect. So last, always try to, you know, end on a positive note. Wanted just a big shout-out to our Building Department, the permitting group. They've come in, they were in there last weekend to try to catch up on all the permits that are, you know, coming in the door, and so they are, they have put in extra hours to make sure that, you know, we're staying up with the development growing here in Apopka. And so just, you know, whenever somebody goes above me on, I want to give them a shout-out. So shout-out to our permitting department here at the city. So with that, meeting adjourned.
All right. My sister got out of surgery, which is good.